All right, let's get started. I'd like to welcome everyone out to our city council meeting tonight. Everyone that's here at the High Chapparal and those that are on TV land. I've asked, well, we've asked George Goose Beardall to give us our little inspirational talk and prayer. So if you want to go up to the mic right there.
Yep.
We've got some golden nuggets here for everybody in this room and also at home watching city council. I thought we'd start out with this right here. Back years ago when I was teaching school, in the building they had a little thing to kind of improve the morale in the building. And so if you wanted to write something nice to some other teacher or student, you could. And this is what I got in my box one day. It said, Dear George, what a grin. We want you to know that the grin is what keeps us going. Now, you need to ask yourself, what keeps you going? I didn't think my grin or the way I do things was influencing anybody, but apparently it was. And this is from the administration. There's thanks for what you do to make the kids at Westlake feel good. What do you do to make people feel good? Think about it. Then they said, keep up the good work, the administration. Okay, we've got some golden nuggets for you. This is by a gal named Bonnie Moore, M-O-H-R, and it's called Living Life. And the way I look at it, life is for living, not dying. So we need to get living our lives. Here's what she says. Life is not a race, but indeed a journey. Be honest. Are we honest in our dealings? Think about it. Work hard. Or do you want a handout? Be choosy. Yeah, I like that. Be careful with who you choose to hang around with. Say thank you. And I want to thank Mike Mendenhall for asking me to come down here tonight. Thank you. Say I love you. When's the last time you told your spouse or your kids that you love them? Or the city council and the mayor? Say great job to someone each day. Go to church. Maybe you're not very religious, but you could go to church and try it out, see if it works. Take time for prayer. The Lord giveth and the Lord taketh. Let your handshake mean more than pen and paper. Yeah, Dad always taught us, if you give somebody your words, you better keep it. So think about it. And I love this right here. Love your life and what you've been given. It's not accidental. Yeah, things are hard right now. Lot of negativity going on, but there's a lot of good things out there, too. Search for your purpose and do it the best you can. The way I look at that is you bring your A game, not A minus or B plus. You bring your A game in all that you do. Dreaming does matter. That word matters out there, you know, Black Lives Matter. Matter's a big word right now. So dreaming does matter. It allows you to become that which you aspire to be. And I like this one. Laugh often. When's the last time you had a good laugh? And here, appreciate the little things in life and enjoy them. I like to go out in my backyard and just watch the birds, watch them sing. I used to like to watch my cat, what she was doing, and then she died. It's just those little things. Find them. Some of the best things really are free. It didn't cost me anything to get in here tonight. Do not worry. Less wrinkles are more becoming. So if you look in the mirror and your face looks a little wrinkled, maybe you need to eliminate some of the stress in your life. Forgive, it frees the soul. And I like this one. Take time for yourself. When's the last time you went in the bedroom, just you and a book? Take time for yourself, plan for longevity. Recognize the special people you've been blessed to know. Wow. There's nobody more special than those that reside in those four walls of your house. I love my wife, and she's watching, so hon, I love you. Love them, I love my kids, too, those two that we can't see and those three that we can. Live for today. Enjoy the moment. Think about it. Enjoy this moment tonight. And in the church news, President Nelson gives us the ABCs of spiritual growth. He says, be attractive, not outwardly, but inwardly. Put a smile on your face. Yeah, that's right, that's okay. She said laugh often. Yeah. He said the B part in the ABCs is be bright. Your face is a reflection of your spirit. Every time you walk in a room, brighten that room up and learn something new each day. And then the C in the ABCs is build your character. Be dependable. Be honest and be full of integrity. And? I've taught down at the jail the last 18 years, and now with the COVID, I haven't been down there since March. Right towards the, before the virus came, the inmates started to get a little bit complacent because they go, okay, Goose is here, Goose is gonna have another great lesson, so I can just sit back and not really do anything? Now, you think about complacency. Have you become complacent, thinking the city council's gonna do it all? We gotta do our part. And I leave this with you, in the sacred name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thanks Goose.
Have I got the prayer? Okay. Good evening, Father in heaven. As we open this city council this night, we want to thank thee especially for thy son, thy beloved son, Jesus Christ, and what he's done for us. We thank him for the atonement, and we thank Joseph Smith for the restoration, and we thank thee for all our great prophets, especially our living prophet, President Nelson. Father, we pray that we'll always bring our A game in all that we do, no matter how simple or how hard, that we'll bring our A game. Bless those that take part here tonight, that they'll have thy spirit to be with them. We pray that nobody came with a bitter feeling in their heart. We pray that they'll have patience for themselves and also others. And we thank thee for this time, Father. Bless us that we'll do all we can to be protected from the virus, that we'll reach out and not forget about our family members or our neighbors, those that live alone, those that are struggling. Please be with those that are mourning the loss of a loved one this night. Again, Father, we love thee very much. We love our mother in heaven as well, and the Godhead. We leave this prayer unto thee, Father, and we do it in the humble and in the sacred name of the Master, that being Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you. Okay, I've asked Councilman Mendenhall to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Please rise and repeat the pledge after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Okay, let's go to public comment. Anyone that'd like to come address the mayor and the council, just come out, make sure you state your name, and you got three minutes, and we're here to listen to you. There is no public hearing on the other stuff. This is public comments to address the mayor and the council there.
So my understanding is we're not going to be allowed to make public comments on the other motions that are pending?
It's not a public hearing.
Yes, sir, I understand that.
Yep, and so if you, and I'll have the same rule I had before. We'd love to hear, but just don't repeat the same thing over and over and over again. We understand, we get it.
I appreciate that. My comments are certainly germane to that other, to the motions that are coming, but they're not relevant, I'm not, I'll skip plenty of it, I appreciate it. I did send, my name is Nathan Burtzle. I live in Old Mill Estates, which is in Leland, which is in Spanish Fork. I sent, I don't, I sent a letter to all of you today. I hope you had a chance to review it that expresses.
I tried to call you.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that. I'm sorry I missed your call. I wanted to express some of my concerns publicly and also some of my statements. I want to, again, like I said, it's germane, but I will skip where necessary. After the planning commission voted to reject the Arrive proposal for Del Monte, I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Ingram. Mr. Ingram indicated to me in the office that you mayor had referred to me and some of my neighbors as a mob, and looking for a mob rule.
Can I stop you right there?
Yes, sir.
I never did say that, and I never did talk to him. So let's get, they are clear right there. I never referred to anybody here mob, you can go back and look at the tape, and in a private conversation, so I know she put that in an email, and I'd appreciate that not making that comment about me because I did not say that.
And I wanted to give you the opportunity, that's why I wanted to bring it up publicly, so you had, so here's, we're gonna get to this in a little bit.
Thank you. We'll give you a little extra time because I took some of your time.
I appreciate it. I want to make sure that that's really clear, and, but the statement was made about mob rule, that that's what were attempted to be done, was mob rule. I take offense to that assertion. Before today, many of you have never spoken with me, I've never spoken with you, mayor, I think you're my stake, but that's about as close as we get. I've spoken with Councilwoman Beck before, Councilman Gordon for a little bit, but I don't know you, and you don't know me. And I'm frustrated that I feel like that the idea at least has gotten into the head of the council, that it's us against you, or us against Arrive. And my point to standing here today is to tell you, there is no us. I'm here representing myself. Other neighbors in my neighborhood have different ideas and perspectives about the Arrive project than I do. Most of my neighbors don't wish to have high-density housing go on the property for some of the same reasons I do. Others have entirely different views altogether. I'm personally not against high-density housing on property, but only if it's safe. That's what I had written down. Mayor, listen, I don't, I don't know what's truthful or not for what I was told, that's just what I was told, and I apologize if that brought you any public embarrassment. I'm trying to air and say, this is what's been told to me.
That's what I tried to call you.
Thank you so much, mayor, I appreciate that. I am tired, though, of being lumped in with, or feeling like at least I'm being lumped in with some shadow group of us and we. I'm tired of gossip and false truths and misstatements like we were trying to air. And this is coming from all sides, from people in my neighborhood, I feel like people from the council, and of course from the applicant in this situation. So I would appreciate if there's reasons if you want to approve a project. Mr. Gordon, I understand that there was, there was an issue where you may have misstated some of one of, one of my neighbors had, that's not fair to her. To my neighbors and friends, don't hate or put down others because they have different opinions than you might have. I frankly find most of you crazy most of the time, but I love you all. Council members, I really am sincerely sorry if anyone from my neighborhood wrote you any letters that were threatening or inappropriate, if anyone's made any conjectures that were inappropriate towards any of you personally. I appreciate your work that you've put in. I trust that you put in a good faith effort on not just the project that obviously impacts me, but on all projects, and I appreciate that, and I want to publicly say thank you to you. But I hope you don't dismiss concerns because there's some amorphous mob about to get any of you, and specifically Mr. Mendenhall. I cannot help but to feel like some of you, from your comments, like there's a, like Don Quixote, that you may have conjured up in your minds an nefarious dragon in Leland who is coming to get you. And I'm here to tell you, there are no dragons in Leland, only windmills, and the windmills are at the mouth of the canyon, not in Leland. There is no we or us, it's not us against you or against us. It's not even us against Arrive or Mr. Mike Morley. We're just concerned citizens who've put down deep roots, and we care deeply about our community and our children and our safety and the safety of people moving in. I want to make just one final point. Mr. Mendenhall, I want to thank you for your motion to remove, to review the general plan, and I've had the opportunity to sit down with Mr. Anderson to discuss this area. Mr. Anderson was open and receptive to the ideas that I and others had already. He was, I appreciated his candor and honesty, and so, Mr. Anderson, thank you so much for meeting with me. I will admit that after the planning commission meeting, I was frustrated at the development committee and at you, and I may have said some things privately that were less than kind, and I apologize for those. So I appreciate your time and again, your efforts. Do you have any questions for me?
Fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to be here for the first time.
State your name, please.
My name's Blaine Brady, I live at 1056 South, 1450 East. I back on, my view is of the new Heritage Farms subdivision.
Huh?
This is probably for a public hearing tonight.
Oh, okay, yeah, there is, excuse me, and I probably misled you. There will be a public hearing on the agenda, probably for that.
That's what it said on the sign, but I have the things that I want considered by, first off, I'll say I'm not opposed to either subdivision, although I like the alfalfa field view better.
And we'll have, you'll have an opportunity to talk in a public hearing. This is just public comments to the mayor here. I probably misled you. You're referring to which one?
Heritage Farms subdivision.
Yes, and we'll have a public hearing on that, so if you want to hold your comments, and we'll hear you when that, that public hearing comes up.
That'd be great.
And I apologize, anybody that's here for a public hearing, we'll have that public hearing, you'll have an opportunity to get up and talk. Right now, these are just, this is our public comments, just general comments, anything that anybody wants to address to the mayor and the council.
My name is Derek Moody, and it's somewhat tangentially referring to some of the stuff that's been going on with the rezoning. However, I do feel like the point I have is still relevant and a little bit novel. Having sat through many hours of listening to some of the response that was given to us about the rezoning, I don't know much anything on politicals, I didn't take a fifth-grade class from KIPP there and get all this wonderful knowledge on how to navigate through these things. My general understanding is there's always tension and conflict when there's disagreement, and it seems like that the center of these disagreements, if I'm right, is the age-old conflict of where do the rights of an individual begin and end, and where do the rights of the community begin and end, and there's always a discussion and a conflict, a tension between those two, and that's obviously been apparent in these decisions. What I think is more relevant and to the point would be not knowing all the intricacies of the political world, and even at the, at the city level. Where do you guys, where do you feel that those rights begin and end? Does a person have a right to just change their zoning willy-nilly, or, I mean, what, I mean, this is obviously part of the process of changing zoning and part of the discussion, and I'm curious, when you give your feedback on your decisions, to help us understand your thought process on what's going on, whether it's you or some of these other representatives up here, on why you choose that, because I understand that he had, that anybody who wants to make the best of their land and make the most profit off of it has rights, and, and I certainly want to, wouldn't want to infringe on that, but I know that there's always limitations on both sides. There's limitations to the mob, and we respectfully have, you know, we have our say, and that may be it, and we won't always get what we want, that's not how it works, and I do understand that in this country. But as you try and express to us why you're voting, why you're voting, perhaps contextualizing it in that sense, like, what is that process that you guys go through when you're considering rezoning something? Obviously, you consider the individual, you consider the voice of the community, and I say that it seems like pretty profoundly the voice of the community in a particular setting is pretty strongly adverse to that, and maybe it's one vote versus one vote there, and you guys still are taking into the account both of those, as well as the whole city and in general. But if, as you retouch on that subject, if you can just maybe help me understand, and maybe others, your thought process on that dichotomy, rights of the individual versus the community, and how you are making your decisions, it would be very helpful if, as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come?
Little mayor, Tyler Bollard, I live in the Academy Park subdivision. So you and I had an interesting conversation earlier today, and I'm glad that we're, you know, going through the steps to get this formality taken care of, but my concern is for this vote, that there may be a different outcome. And, and so my concern is that I've heard there is someone that needs to recuse themselves for a conflict of interest. Now, I'm not accusing anybody, that's just what I've heard, and my concern is that if that's the case, then mayor, you would have potentially a tie vote. And what you mentioned to me over the phone today is that you would not vote to side with our neighborhood.
I did not say that.
Okay, you can clarify, that's what I heard.
I said I'll vote what's best for the city.
You did say that, you did say that.
So don't put words in my mouth, please.
Nope, mayor, that's not what happened. So you did say that you would not side with our neighborhood because you felt like one of your council members has been singled out and their livelihood was gone after.
Okay, I'm gonna stop you right there. I'm not gonna have you sit there and accuse me of saying something that I did not say. I did say that about someone singled out, my council member, I did not say that I was gonna vote, not with the neighborhood because of that.
Okay.
Okay, so let's get it straight, you're getting it right from my mouth, so everybody can hear this. I'm not gonna have you come up here and accuse me of something that I did not say.
Okay, well, I should have recorded the conversation clearly, but what happens is where if you're now the swing vote potentially in this rezoning decision, I wonder if there are other conflicts of interest in this situation that ought to be made known to the community, whether that's with a council member or you mayor and Arrive, or Dean Ingram specifically, or maybe among the group here. And I would love clarification during council comment, but if not, I just wanted to let you know that I'm concerned. There are a lot of people in our neighborhood that are against this rezoning, not because it's rezoning and the property's gonna be used a certain way, except that it's too dense, and we're again concerned about safety, traffic issues, and so forth. So that's all I want to say.
Hello, my name is Amber Pryor. I live in Old Mill Estates. Elected officials, appreciate your time that you've put into all that you do for our city and for hearing us out. Going back to the city council agenda.
maybe others, your thought process on that dichotomy, rights of the individual versus the community, and how you are making your decisions, it would be very helpful as we go forward. Thank you.
Anyone else like to come?
Little Mayor, Tyler Bollard. I live in the Academy Park subdivision. So you and I had an interesting conversation earlier today, and I'm glad that we're, you know, going through the steps to get this formality taken care of, but my concern is for this vote, that there may be a different outcome. And so, my concern is that I've heard there is someone that needs to recuse themselves for a conflict of interest. Now, I'm not accusing anybody, that's just what I've heard, and my concern is that if that's the case, then Mayor, you would have potentially a tie vote. And what you mentioned to me over the phone today is that you would not vote to side with our neighborhood.
I did not say that.
Okay? You can clarify. That's what I heard.
I said I'll vote what's best for the city.
You did say that. You did say that.
So, don't put words in my mouth, please.
Nope, Mayor, that's not what happened. So, you did say that you would not side with our neighborhood because you felt like one of your council members has been singled out, and their livelihood was gone after.
Okay, I'm gonna stop you right there. I'm not gonna have you sit there and accuse me of saying something that I did not say. I did say that about someone singled out, my council member. I did not say that I was gonna vote, not with the neighborhood because of that.
Okay?
Okay? So let's get it straight, you're getting it right from my mouth, so everybody can hear this. I'm not gonna have you come up here and accuse me of something that I did not say.
Okay, well, I should have recorded the conversation, clearly, but what happens is, where if you're now the swing vote, potentially, in this rezoning decision, I wonder if there are other conflicts of interest in this situation that ought to be made known to the community, whether that's with a council member, or you, Mayor, and Arrive, or Dean Ingram specifically, or maybe among the group here. And I would love clarification during council comment, but if not, I just wanted to let you know that I'm concerned. There are a lot of people in our neighborhood that are against this rezoning, not because it's rezoning and the property's gonna be used a certain way, except that it's too dense, and we're, again, concerned about safety, traffic issues, and so forth. So, that's all I want to say.
Hello, my name is Amber Pryor. I live in Old Mill Estates. Elected officials, appreciate your time that you've put into all that you do for our city and for hearing us out. Going back to the city council agenda, March 1st, 2005, is kind of interesting, that's when Charter One Development proposed, and the city council voted on that. I say voted because many council members expressed their frustration that their hands were essentially tied, because, as you know, when there's a public school going in, the city doesn't have a lot of jurisdiction over that. And that was a point of frustration, I think, for the residents, for the city, and I think that you have a unique opportunity now to have a say, to not have your hands tied over how this school has impacted that area of Little Cow Town, USA, Leland, Utah. My kids go to ALA, I love the school, I'm grateful for it. They walk, they ride their bikes. Connecting sidewalks eventually would be awesome. Is a town home the right way to accomplish that, compared with the other safety concerns? Probably not. My point is, is that we kind of have an inherited responsibility now, as citizens, as an elected official, body of elected officials, to understand that we need to look at the area and say, is this going to be right? Mill Road was never supposed to be an outlet. What was talked about on those agenda minutes was that when it was developed, then it would be widened and be made more safe to be a collector or commuter road. And as we've seen, development has actually made it more narrow, ironically, and we still have a lot of traffic going out onto Mill Road. It is what it is, that's the saying. However, what we do have is the chance to look at it and say, hey, you know, the property owners who were around then, and who also helped to create the dilemma that we're facing, we don't need to punish them, because it's benefited our community to have that school there, but we don't need to necessarily cater and make changes that are going to bring about more hazards, more complaints, more hours. You guys have put in so much time listening to us, and staying overtime to hear public comments, and we appreciate that. We've put in lots of hours, too, trying to express our views and our concerns as well, so I thank you for that, and I think we're at a good opportunity now to look at that and say, what really will be best for the city when you're voting? What will be best for this area? Last comment, I went and visited my sister-in-law in Henderson, Nevada, a few months ago. Found myself on a road that was like five lanes wide, curb and gutter, sidewalk, and streetlights, fields, and I was like, this is so weird, what's going on? And it dawned on me, this is what great planning looks like, when the infrastructure is put in place before the schools, before the Costcos, before the townhomes, when there is place there, and there's plenty of space in Spanish Fork to do that, to prepare ahead of time for the influx of people and of cars, and to take a situation that's already difficult. In my opinion, it's a great idea to vote no for this rezoning, and put in dental offices, car tire change places, I don't know, somewhere where we're not going to be diverting commuters through neighborhoods where little kids play. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address us? Okay, seeing none, I'll go to council comments. Councilman Argyle.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of, this week has been an awesome week for our city. We had the opportunity to open our All Abilities Park, and also to open and dedicate our new Station 62, and I'm sure every one of our council members are gonna have something to do that. I've commented before on the All Abilities Park. We had the opportunity to have a soft opening where we invited the 30 families that helped us build this park, and then the next night, we had the employees steak fry, only we had hamburgers there, and then invited their families to come and enjoy that park. And then we had another little opening where I invited those who special needs, that belonged to the Neble School District in the Spanish Fork area, to have an opportunity to spend a night in this park. And then Saturday, we had our grand opening. I was fortunate to attend all those. I watched this park. I'm so grateful for those who have put time into this park. Dale Robbins and his entire team, I don't think Dale slept for a year, worrying about this park and getting it done, because we had a deadline that we had to meet, based on some people who had donated a large sum of money and then asked us to get it done. I think the reason they asked us to get it done is because government takes so long to get things done, and they just said, hey, come on, and we accomplished that. To see the smiles on those children's faces, to watch a young lady who, Miss Spanish Fork Extraordinaire, swing in a chair, in her wheelchair, words cannot explain the feelings to watch that happen all over that park, all day, all day long, and even when we had the grand opening, to watch the kids and the laughter, what a great opportunity I've enjoyed to be a part of this, and how blessed this community is, is to have a park unlike any other park. I will stress, please, make this a part of your community, watch over this park, take care of this park. It is such a blessing to the people of this town and this community. It was not a cheap park, it is a very large park. There's so much, and future growth and things that we can do with this large park and the water feature. As I've drove by many, many times, I told Dale, I think the zip line, and of course, the splash pad seems to be the popular place where everybody was convening, but grateful to Westland Construction and their contractors, what an awesome job they did. And they went into this pretty much open, but all of our departments, and they expressed that. When they had something, an issue, they could contact one of our departments, and we were there to try to solve the issue to keep this going through. And this was from the very beginning, and even the people who donated the land and the development that had to go on before we even started the park with the homes. Grateful for them and that community in that area. Also grateful for Station 62 to open. What a blessing it is to us, and it was expressed during that, that the response times were unreal, and I remember when we went to a full-time ambulance, my sister-in-law works at 911 Center, and just was talking with her, and she just said, how wonderful it is, and we cut the times, and I'll be wrong if I say, but we cut the response time down five minutes or something like that by doing just a simple little thing, and she was so grateful because it saves lives. And that's what this Station 62, plus it's a beautiful added to the community. Grateful for it, it'll get staffed and equipment into it, and our response times will be going down. And that's both for our ambulance and our fire, and grateful for them. It was a good day, as we gathered up there, all of our first responders, and grateful for each one of them and the time they put. When you talk about our fire station and our firemen, and you think that some of those firemen have volunteered for 30, 40 years, what a blessing to our community. They didn't, they didn't need to do that, but they've done it, to take care of and keep our community safe, and they're still doing it every single day, and I'm so grateful for each one of them. In the midst of all this stuff that's going on in this COVID-19 thing, we accomplished some really good things that took place in Spanish Fork City, and we continue to do that, and I just am so grateful for that. And I want to express to all those that was involved, how grateful I am that I was a part of that, and got to be a part of that, and seeing those, I won't never forget the smiles on their faces when that park opened, and they got to run into that park, and they didn't know what was there, but how grateful, and it was beyond my expectation that park is to. Thank you for the community. You pay for it, enjoy it, take care of this great park. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Gordon.
Mayor, thank you. The only thing I have with the garbage district is that we've been on the selection pre-bid this week for the architects. I think that'll take a while through the design, probably a year, and hopefully starts construction end, or '22, end of '21, maybe '22, on the new transfer station. That's all I have to report there, and then just echo what Councilman Argyle said about the new fire station ribbon cutting yesterday. It's great to see our first responders, whom we love and support, up there, and appreciate Chief Adams, Chief Jarvis, and Chief Baum, and all they do with the fire ambulance and our police officers. Locked our keys in our car on Sunday, needed a police officer, thank goodness they, Michelle was able to come up and help us out, so we're always so grateful for all that they do for our great community, so that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Minden Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Goose, for coming and giving the spiritual thought. Ran into George in the parking lot this morning, and again, had to apologize for the traffic past his house, because that's me, that's my area of town that comes down 4th North and hits 4th East and goes to the new shopping area, and what used to be a quiet, pretty quiet street, has turned into something else, and...
Yeah, it's the Costco freeway now.
It's the Costco freeway. But just like Goose, as I remember as a Pony League coach, was a great baseball coach to a lot of my friends. I always wanted to beat whatever team he was coaching, he never coached me, but I do remember him being the optimist guy, and the optimist coach, and saying, go get them, and so, that's the way he is today with his situation, is he, I said, hey, sorry, we're trying to get that other road go through and get across the railroad tracks, so the east side of town will get over there in an easier way beside your house, and he said, you know, this COVID thing has brought up a lot of things, that the results have been okay, of people walking around the block more, people spending more time with their family, and things like that. So the eternal optimist, Goose Beardall, I appreciate you being here tonight, and your service to so many, but not just Little League, but the J.O. too, important service, so appreciate you. Mayor, the Chamber and Rotary Golf Tournament, annual tournament that's held, is tomorrow up at the Oaks. Again, this is COVID delays of another golf course, but it will happen tomorrow, so speaking with Heather Yow today, she wanted to make sure I mentioned that. I was gonna have a T-shirt to show you of what it is, but all those who are signed up, thanks for your sponsorship, thanks for coming and playing, your donation to that golf tournament. You should see the letters that comes in every year to the Chamber, to the Rotary Club, of the gratefulness of kids that get a scholarship, albeit it's not enough to pay for their whole education, but these are kids that typically don't have any other scholarship monies, and they get one awarded from the Rotary and from the Chamber, and it's this golf tournament that funds it. So, thank you to those businesses that navigate through these different times, and have still found a way to support the Chamber and support the Rotary Golf Tournament. Appreciate the mayor doing his good work that he does outside of his city duties, but he's been on the front lines of the CARES Act, making sure that there's availability for your local businesses to be able to access those funds, and try to make a go of it, try to stay afloat until we return to some sense of business normalcy. So, if you're signed up, we'll see you tomorrow, it'll be a good time. It's been mentioned already, the All Abilities Park, Adventure Heights, so many things you could say about that park, and about those kids, and about that area, but the part that stuck out to me is during the ribbon cutting, a mom that, to quote her, said, me and my family are always in the way. I'm always told what my daughter can't do, what she won't be able to do, but this park has created a space where she can do things, where her brothers yell for her to come play. And it was tough to see many dry eyes in the area when that statement was said, and I'm just grateful there's a space for a family like that in Spanish Fork to feel like they belong. Having said that, the last couple of days of spending time there with my family, spoke to Dale about this, is just a reminder, and we'll get this fine-tuned better for everybody to be able to see it every day that you attend the park, but make sure if you see anything, you know, this is your park, this is our community's park, and obviously, it has a higher, you know, a little bit higher purpose than maybe our other parks, as what's inside of it, what's available to people. And so, it kind of broke the hearts of quite a bit of us to see that the first day of the park being open, there's long lines at two of the swings, because one of the swings, you know, was broken by some teenagers that just messing around. Some other things of just not obeying the rules, and so, some, you know, some skateboards or some dogs and whatnot. I would say, let's just figure out a way to do this as a community. Obviously, it would be hard to fund this, like, people have compared it to our own little Disneyland, well, we don't have the Dapper Dan's unless, Brandon, you were signing up to be no Dapper Dan. It's not gonna happen, so we won't have enough folks around to police it, so let's police it ourselves, let's make sure if we're sending our teenagers, we're reminding them, hey, that equipment is for some special needs kids more than anybody, and so, let's take care of it. Did you have a, Dale, is there a little video that maybe Pete put together that, you'll probably see more of this released, but is that all right? Is it queued up? If you have it queued up, Nick, maybe this will be what people can be prepared for of what's gonna come.
I can't say it's been a long time coming, because this project was fast and furious. It's absolutely a miracle, and we're just thrilled that we can have this in our community, in our backyard. Adventure Heights has some meaning, and there's obviously a lot of adventures in here, but today, the play world is all about elevation. We've got a big treehouse that was custom-made for Spanish Fork City. You won't find another one like it in the world, but treehouses spell adventure to me. You've got zip lines, and waterfalls, and mountains, and caves, and all the fun things that spell adventure in this park. But the heights also have some other significance, and that is that we want kids and people to be able to reach new heights personally. You'll notice here in the front, on the ground, in this blockwork, we've got a compass, and the word compass actually comes from the Latin, com, meaning together, and passes, meaning step. So the word compass actually means step together. That has some serious significance about what this park is all about. This is literally an All Abilities Park.
Sabrina has a rare brain disorder, she doesn't have the protein for her brain development, and so, we are constantly being told what Sabrina can't do. Sabrina can't walk, Sabrina can't talk, so when we go to a park, we don't even get out the car anymore. Sabrina and I just sit, and we wait for my husband and my boys to be done, and we go home. A year ago, we were invited to this meeting with the city, and they told us that someone donated money and wanted to build an All Abilities Park. And get this, they wanted us, families with special needs kids of all abilities, to tell them what the park should look like, what it should feel like, and what my child can enjoy at a park. Not only did they listen, they delivered. There isn't anything Sabrina can't do here at Adventure Heights. She can go on the playground with her wheelchair, she can go on a swing with her wheelchair, she can climb Ford Mountain in her wheelchair. It's been such a tender mercy, hearing my boys calling their sister to play. Sabrina, there's a toy they can go on together, and that she can play with them. When you walk through these gates, you already know these kids, tons of kids here with different abilities. There is something here for everyone, everyone is welcome. This park means everything to my family. I love, love Spanish Fork, and I can't wait for Sabrina to play here with her friends, I can't wait for her to play with her brothers, and for my family to create memories here, and I appreciate everybody and all their hard work that they've done to be able to create this place for us. Thank you.
It's about that experience for that mom and for that kid. There's no demeaning, you know, I'm not a second class. I hope that when a family comes into this park, and they enjoy the different features here, they walk out of here and they know they're loved, they know they're counted, they know they're valued. They go to some other park and those thoughts maybe never enter their mind, but here, they're gonna walk out of... going to walk out of here and say, "Spanish Fork loves me. I count. I matter. I'm important."
Thanks, Dale. That mom that reminded, really in perfect words, of what her daughter can do rather than what she can't do, brought me back to my mom's career in the school system was helping to take care of the special needs kids, and that's what they focused on in the Bridges Program, was getting the special needs children out in the community, working at jobs, doing different things. And they always focused on saying what they could do rather than what they couldn't do because they were told that they couldn't do a lot, and it was time to do what they could. So what a blessing that that park will make for generations to come, and thank you to the generous family. Thank you to you citizens. Thank you to the vision of Dale, the staff, and everybody to bring that about. It's been awesome. It will be awesome. Let's just make sure we're taking care of it in the best way we can. Station 62 has been brought up as well. What a day, what a week on Canyon Road in Spanish Fork, but the sun was hot, pictures I've seen. My forehead's so big you could land a 747 on it, and it was pretty roasted after the thing was over. I know people were worried about the weather, but man, those windows just bring about such a cool aspect of that station that'll be there again for a generation and do important work in our community. As I thought about what to say about Station 62, again, it brought to mind the selfless volunteers that we've had for decades in Spanish Fork, what they do, what they mean to our community. And specifically, more recently, as we're all aware, the struggle that we have in our community, not just in our community, but the Wasatch Front and the state as a whole of the epidemic we have with mental health and suicide. I thought about those people in there. I saw some of them, that I know personal stories about them that they wouldn't know that I know, but I thought about a recent story of someone in our community, a youth that succumbed to depression and died by suicide. But on the scene, it was let us know how caring, and this is from the family, how caring the individuals were in our community and the EMTs and the first responders. It'll never leave me that they found out what was told to the youth as they're struggling for their life, was our first responders said, "Hang in there, your mom's on the way. She loves you." And then followed it up with, "We love you. We're here and we love you." And you can see that, you can see that in the way they serve and the way they come to work, what they do day in, day out. And those words kept with me that whole day, that whole night. And then the next day, we learned about another recent suicide in our neighboring community. And so our folks in the program that we've created, we're immediately trying to help in that situation any way they can, trying to assist the family, trying to assist all those that are affected by a tragedy like that. And I'm proud of that. I'm proud of the way that this city has said, "We're here to try to help the physical, the mental health, the social health of our community." And when I saw the letter from the principal that I'm sure no principal thinks that they're going to have to send out someday, what a tough gig, what a tough job, what a tough thing to deal with in our community. But that's what came to mind, and that's what I'd like to extend to our community, to those first responders, to our group that will help this family in a neighboring community is, "We're here with you. We love you." Because I know that's what our first responders would say. Lastly, Mayor, this will be my last city council meeting as president of the Utah League of Cities and Towns. Next week, we will have a changeover in that venue where Mayor Caldwell of Ogden will serve as the next president. Mayor Don Ramsey of South Jordan will serve as the president after him, and I'll serve a year as the past president. It's been an awesome opportunity. I just want to say in a public meeting before those meetings next week where virtually I'll have the opportunity to address and thank a lot of folks, a lot of elected officials, a lot of legislators, a lot of people across the state of Utah that I've had the opportunity to meet in that capacity, tell them thank you. Thank you for their friendship. Thank you for their leadership. Thank you for their mentorship. Thank you for their patience. But four years of being fortunate to be involved with an organization full of such good people has blessed my life, and it's crazy that it's coming to an end relatively quick. Our good former mayor, Marie Huff, I had the chance to speak to her family before taking up the opportunity of serving in leadership at the league. They let me know that she was the last Spanish Fork elected official to serve in that capacity, and they had some really cute stories, some neat things to say about Mayor Marie Huff and her relationship with a bunch of the folks up there. And even one of the folks that, Mayor Segini, a mayor of one of the South Salt Lake Cities... Seth, I can't remember which city that was. Midvale. Midvale, that's right. Of Mayor Marie Huff's relationship with Mayor Segini, who we'll honor at the conference next week. So just want to say publicly, thank you. Thanks to the council. Thanks to the administration. Thanks for everybody with your patience as far as that goes, as my capacity in that role will come to an end and somebody else will pick up the torch. But I've appreciated your support, your insight, your filling in for me when I've been up there, meeting with all sorts of different elected officials. You know, different cities do it different ways. They do have partisan races in different ways where there's Democrats, Republicans, right? And my pitch has always been that in local government, it's not a D or an R, it's just can you get the problem fixed? And that's what I've seen as I've interacted with those folks, has been that way of how they just care about their community and want to continue to take it in the right direction. So thank you. Thank you to all of you, and that'll wrap up next week, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scobbs.
Mayor, as has been said, again, great appreciation to staff, all the departments, everyone that worked on the All Abilities Park, Adventure Heights, and Station 62, such great amenities to our community, things that will change lives both emotionally and physically for many, many years to come. I won't speak more to that. As has already been said, just a fantastic, fantastic week to be able to have those come to fruition with many other things that are still on the way. The hospital this spring is projected to open, which will again continue to bless our community. Some things, also, I guess in a personal vein, want to give a shout out to one of our citizens, Mark McKell. In fact, in two days, he'll turn 102 years old. Served in this community for a long time, well, continues to serve, I should say, in our community for quite some time. Just a great, great man, great pillar, a good friend of mine as well. And 102 years old, I can't even imagine the changes that he's seen, not just in our community but in our country. So a shout out to Mark. And then some of his relatives, as happenstance would come about. Mayor, I'm happy to report that a sizable portion of our veterans from the American Legion as well as the VFW were down at Salem Hills High School last Friday. Salem has a football game each year where they honor veterans, and there was a great contingent from Spanish Fork of our veterans that were down there. They had the opportunity to have a breakfast, I guess a breakfast dinner, pancake, you know, pancakes at 5:00 in the afternoon with each other, kind of, you know, be able to mix and mingle, and had the opportunity to hear from Governor Herbert. He came down, visited with the kids and team and such there at Salem High School. But more relevant to us, he was able to visit with our veterans, combined between the two communities, had some wonderful words about their service and the things that he's seen from their service, not just to our country but here within our community. And the great, I guess the great torch that they carried and continue to carry in many cases, and it passed on to us and future generations. So it was wonderful to be down there, wonderful to be able to see them celebrated for their service, and especially from the Commander in Chief of the State, Governor Herbert. This Friday, Spanish Fork High School will also be doing Hometown Heroes, celebrating the things, as Councilman Menon Hall mentioned, those in the community that give of their time and talents, EMS, police, fire, and others that give such great service to our community. So no other committees should report on it this time, but what a neat thing to be able to see members of our community influencing lives outside our community as well as in. So it was challenging, but a good week as well. That's all.
Councilmember Beck.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, I just want to thank you for your time and service as the league president. I don't know how you've juggled it all, doing this and managing all of that. So congratulations to a year well done. You've done fantastic. And Kier, didn't you get promoted to Colonel in the National Guard? Congratulations. Another big accomplishment to juggle everything that you both are doing, so thank you. A lot has already been said, excuse me, about the park and the fire station, but I chose one of my favorite pictures of each. I think Pete Hanson took about 600-plus pictures at the All Abilities Park, and the one I wanted to share, Nick, if you'll pull that out, is not even from Pete, I don't believe. I think this is from Doug Ford. And this is of our Parks and Rec Director, Dale Robinson. It says it all. This is taken, I believe, on Friday night after a week of open houses, stress, making sure that the water was even going to work, that the grand opening would even happen, and he got final word that it was a go, and I think this is a little celebratory dance. So I thought that this spoke volumes for all of his time, all of the Parks and Rec's time and overtime and extra work on making sure that this park came together. So Dale, please extend all of our appreciation to your department. The next picture from Station 62, I think this is the moment that touched me the most yesterday is when our officers were putting our flag up and the national anthem was playing, and it just, it touched me. And their service, they do things that I would never dare do. Our police officers, our EMTs, and our firefighters, it just speaks volumes to their bravery and their service, and it's just so appreciated. So those are the two pictures I wanted to share. And I think I would also like to wish Mark McKell a happy birthday, 102. Congratulations. Happy birthday, Mark. That's all I have.
I believe we've got a video on the Station 62. We can queue that up. I know we had one on, we also have one on the Station 62.
Eight-plus years that I have been able to serve as a council member. I can't think of a council meeting that hasn't started. Eight-plus years that I have been able to serve as a council member. I can't think of a council meeting that hasn't started with some comments that are thanking Chief Adams, Chief Jarvis, Chief Baum's individuals. And so if we could just please recognize all of our first responders.
Station 62 was designed around first responder's safety with the foremost and being able to provide service to this east bench of town. In that, we have airlocks in between the apparatus bay and the living spaces with hand wash, eye wash, and boot wash in order to keep any carcinogens that come off of burning materials away from our firefighters and EMT's living spaces and out here in the truck bay. Everything about this is designed for the long-term life and sustainability of the first responder in order to respond and provide a very valuable service to the community of Spanish Fork.
We're super excited for our new facility because it gives us the extra room for sure, so we'll be able to run out of two stations full-time. So we will have someone manning this station from 7:00 in the morning till 7:00 the next morning. So we'll run in 12-hour shifts still. It's got sleeping quarters, so that's awesome. We don't have sleeping quarters at our other facility, and that will give us in the community the time, the response time out the door. We call it shoot time, which makes it within just a minute, even 30 seconds sometimes. So that's going to be super awesome for Spanish Fork City.
Well, between these two ribbon cuttings we've had here in the last two weeks, one with the All Abilities Park and this with the fire station, you can see that the city really cares about our citizens. One, we care about all families, and we want to do something that we can give them, that everyone can be involved in with the All Abilities Park. This, we show them that here on the east side, we're here to help them, so our response time is quicker because we want to get to those people and help those people out. And so as Spanish Fork grows, so does Spanish Fork, looking for the best way we can serve our citizens and make them safe and sound.
Want to say our SF-17 team is second to none when it comes to putting videos together and doing our things around here. I mean, that's as professional as you can get. I also want to thank Mike for his service at the League of City. I don't know of any president of the League of City. We have two conferences that we normally go. Mike was instrumental in canceling both of them because of the COVID. So he did well there, but thank you, Mike, for all your service there. And George, you know, I got to tell you a little story. When we were coaching against each other, Jamie Chapel offered me $50 if I would come fully uniform when we played you guys, because George, if you'll know George, he always came in full uniform when he coached his team. And Jamie said, "I'll give you $50 if you dress up and you come in full uniform when we're playing George's team." And I just couldn't do it, George, so I just couldn't do it. So that was awesome. And we thank you for your service and volunteerism that you've done here. You know, you're an all-star, so thank you.
Mayor?
Huh? I didn't wear it. I couldn't do it. Couldn't bring myself, I couldn't fit into it. It was a problem.
Yeah, we love doing Goose in the Wild.
There you go. I tell you.
We have a lot of great people.
It was awesome. So I'm just grateful for everyone here on our two ribbon cuttings this week. It's been said, and you know, this is a great community and a great citizens that are here in this community, and it's an honor and a privilege to serve and to represent you guys. Okay, let's move on to Spanish Fork 101.
Mayor and councilmembers, I just wanted to take a minute and invite you all out and all the public out to our Wings and Wheels event that's coming up at the Spanish Fork Airport. It's going to be a week from this Saturday on September 26th, and we've got a really great event planned in spite of the COVID. We've had to really scale back on the number of people we can allow. Usually we have about 5,000 people come. This year we'll be limited to 1,000 because of the COVID, but we've got a lot of space down there so we can spread people out, and we're going to have some really great things for people to see. We've got powered parachutes, we've got skydivers, we've got the Porsche Club doing an autocross down there. We have Cash Day Street Race where it'll be head-to-head with... We have Cash Day Street Race where it'll be head-to-head with cars racing eighth of a mile and it'll be, you know, eight rounds to start with, then four, then three, then two, and then one, and then the final winner takes a big pot of money home. All of the entry fees will be, go to the winner of those races. We've got in both the big tire and the small tire. We're going to have food trucks down there. We've got some souped-up dune buggies, have a car show, helicopter rides, airplane rides. We have live music from Bob's Band. We've got RC models that are going to put on a demonstration. We've got two phenomenal aerobatic aircraft performers. One of them's even going to include some pyrotechnics that we're going to be setting off down there. And then we've got a lot of our local pilots will be doing touch and goes in the spot landing contest. We've got a burnout competition scheduled and then we have an exotic car runway attack where we get the police down there with their radar gun and see how fast some of these exotic cars. I understand we've got a Bugatti coming. We've got some, you know, just about every kind of fancy car you can imagine is going to be participating in that. So there's going to be a ton, a ton for everybody to see down there and we're just really anxious to put it on. I want to especially thank the Parks and Rec Department for all, we can pull this off. They do so much to help us put this together. And then also the Public Safety Department where they're coming off this big couple of weeks and then here we're going in another week or two into this big event. We're just really grateful and we just really look forward to having everybody come down and enjoy the airport. It's a great facility that we have down there and we'd like everybody in the whole community to enjoy it.
Chris, I have a quick question. You said only 1,000 people can come. So do people have to pre-register or is it just going to be first come, first served?
It's online, we're selling tickets online through SF City Tax. And it's very likely we expect to sell out.
So you're not sold out as of right now?
Not sold out as of now, there's 20 things left right now. And it's a week from Saturday.
Thank you.
All right, consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, new business. Motion to rescind ordinance number Z07-20, which was approved on September 1st, 2020, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork for the Del Monte Zone Change. Ordinance would change the zone of the subject property from Industrial 2 to R3.
Mayor, council, as you explained, a public hearing was held on the zone change and that was on September 1st. After that public hearing concluded, the City Council approved ordinance number 7, sorry, Every ordinance that you pass has an effective date in it and that, and this ordinance was specified to take effect 20 days after passage and publication. So we have not yet reached that time. It's only been 14 days since that, since it was passed. Because the ordinance is not yet effective, you may rescind it. There is very clear, explicit Utah law, case law on that. Any zoning ordinance that has not been effective may be rescinded. That's a very recent case. I was also asked to explain a little bit about the conflict of interest laws that municipal employees and officers face. So I'm going to just highlight a few sections of the Municipal Officers and Employees Ethics Act. The first is one where it's an offense to use your personal, your office or your employment to further your personal, substantially further your personal economic interest or to secure special privileges for yourself or another person or to accept gifts of substantial value. So there is no disclosure that's required for that section. You just simply can't do those sorts of things. Second, there are two, there are two sections that require a disclosure to the mayor. One is if you receive compensation for assistance in a transaction that involves municipality. Think like a real estate agent that is maybe involved in a sale to the city where you might stand to get a commission for a transaction involving the city. If you are doing that, you have to disclose that to the mayor and to the body that you're a member of immediately before acting on that business. The second type that involves a disclosure to the mayor is if you are an officer or hold an interest in a company or a business entity that is regulated by the city. So if, say, there's a business that is regulated in some way by the city, gosh, I don't know, I can't even think of one off the top of my head, you have to disclose that in writing to the mayor. But you have to, it has to be that entity that's doing that business with the city. So those two require disclosures to the mayor. The next section involves if you're, if you have an interest in a business entity that's doing business with the city. You have to do a disclosure of that, but you have to do it during the public meeting before, before any discussion on that, on that item. The last section that employees and officers have to worry about is just almost like a catch-all. If you have an investment or a personal interest in, that creates some type of conflict between your official duties and your personal interests, then you need to disclose that conflict in a public meeting. So those are, sorry, that's a little quick and it's a little more complicated than that, but those are the five main sections that involve, that we need to be worried about as officers and employees of the city. Any questions about the procedure tonight or for me?
Could you explain why we're having to rescind this?
The rescission is to...
But why we're having to redo that?
We haven't done the preliminary plat yet, but it's just the zoning ordinance that can be rescinded. You can't rescind a preliminary plat if that was approved.
No, because we didn't do that.
Right, and it's not been approved.
Okay.
But just the zoning ordinance, which isn't effective yet, you may rescind that one.
Okay.
Hey Vaughn, what's the difference between recuse and versus disclose?
That's a really good question. And I failed to mention that, but none of those statutes require a person to recuse themselves from the vote. There's nothing in Utah law that requires that. Disclosure is just stating that potential conflict of interest, either in a statement that you file with the mayor in those two sections that I mentioned or with the body, with the city council. You have to disclose it on the record.
With that, I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, before we get into... Discussion or potential vote or anything like this, I'd just like to publicly recuse myself from discussion or any vote of this, just for the potential of any conflict there.
Okay, thank you. With that, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to rescind ordinance number Z07-20, which was approved on September 1st, 2020, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Del Monte Zone Change.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilmember Scopes. Roll call vote, Councilwoman Scopes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilwoman Argal.
Aye.
Okay, that is passed. We'll move to B, consideration and vote on ordinance number Z12-20, an ordinance changing the zoning designation and amending the official zone map of Spanish Fork City for the Del Monte Zone Change. This ordinance would change the zoning of the subject property from Industrial 2 to R3.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for both the items that you just read in and the following one, the consideration of the proposed preliminary plat for the Del Monte Town Homes Project. There's nothing new for us to present tonight from what was discussed in the meeting two weeks ago. So with that, I am just going to leave it at that. We're of course happy to answer any questions that you have of us. We do have the presentation that arrived made as well two weeks ago, if that's helpful at all, the review. But I will just reiterate that relative to previous action on the two different proposals, the Development Review Committee recommended that the zone change and the preliminary plat be approved. The Planning Commission recommended that the zone change and preliminary plat approval requests be denied. And like I said, we're happy to answer whatever questions you might have or proceed however you'd like to.
Any questions?
I don't have questions, but I have a comment.
I'll listen.
If that's okay. So I just wanted to acknowledge Nathan for coming up and stating that the neighborhood is not us against you. I appreciated hearing that. And then Derek, you said that you would appreciate better feedback from us as to why we vote a certain way. And so I just at this time wanted to make a couple statements of why I'm voting the way I am, because I think I myself, maybe a couple others, didn't state that clearly last time. So since day one, I didn't just feel like this was the right place for this zone. Second is I've tried my best to listen, whether it's personal phone calls or emails and just seeing things from the residents' point of view. And the third one is I also feel and believe that just because the developers come to us with certain plans, we don't need to approve everything that comes to us. I know right now everyone's going to come to us pushing higher density than maybe what we want or what the residents want, but people are going to try and get their top dollar. And so I just feel like we don't have to approve every single thing that comes to us. And I think it's taken some, some time for me to feel confident saying, hey, developer, I don't want this. It's, I don't want the developers to come in and tell us how our city's going to look. I want us as a council to represent the council, the staff and the residents of us saying what our city's going to look like. And then just again, that we, up here, we do know when we need to recuse ourselves. One example would just be, I work at Utah Valley Magazine. If I had sold ads to Arrive Homes, I would have recused myself from that. Dean Ingram does not buy ads, so I didn't have to do anything. And I know, you know, we've been taught the law and we know the law's there. So that's all I want to say.
Hey, we're not doing that here, thank you. Mayor, I'd like to just answer the same, answer the questions of why I vote the way I do. So the city and the council, we probably impose more on a landowner than probably anything else does. We have zoning changes in everything we do. And I always try to make that important. It is important to me, the person that owns the land, he is the landowner, he's owned it for whatever period of time. It's his land. And I believe that he has the right to do what he wants to with that land within those laws and those boundaries and those zoning laws that we create. But I also have passion about that because land ownership is, it's a sacred right in this country and it's protected by the Constitution. And I always try to keep that in mind. Density, I am not a huge fan of density, but I also have learned in the four or five years that I've been serving here in Spanish Fork, we have to have options for the people in our community. I want a single-family home on a lot. Right now, I'm on a very large lot and I am moving to a very small lot for reasons that I am retired, I'm tired of weeds. But I understand that there are people who want townhomes, condos and other things. And I try to be aware of that, especially in our community. Our Commission and Review Committee, our Commission spent a lot of time a few years ago going around and making sure that when Spanish Fork did these things, we weren't doing them like the other places and just building stuff just to build it. And they took us on some tours so that we could see some of these communities that were built, so that when we did this in Spanish Fork, and I still appreciate that and I still refer back to that because some of those things that they brought was important and it was important in Spanish Fork to do it. And I take that into consideration. The other is our city. I live here, I've lived here my whole life, generations, I'm going to continue living here. I don't want to, when I'm done with here, look back and say, and there's been things that I've looked back and like, oh, shoot, we could have done that different and we could have done it better. But I don't want to do that. And I know that decisions, and it takes, every one of these councilmen and the mayor, they take their time. It takes a lot of effort to look. This one in particular, we've had emails. I always go see the site. I always drive out and try to put myself in those shoes and try to understand what they're talking about. But in the end, I have to make that decision, what I think's best. I represent the citizens of Spanish Fork, not just the ones in this room, but all 45,000 of them. They put me in office and I, that's important to me that I do that. But I do it with Spanish Fork. It's been said, we're a great community. We're an awesome community and in this state, this state is a good community. But people are moving here because of Spanish Fork and what we have here and the quality of life we have to offer, the safety we have to offer. And that's important to me to reserve that. I know there's always issues, traffic, and that's been a huge one here and that concerns me still because there's schools and there's children. And I think about up at the junior high, hopefully next year, one of the issues that actually me and Mike kind of stood on the bridge one day after an accident and hoped to see a tunnel go underneath Highway 6. And it has nothing to do but safety. And it's not, it's not a cheap fix that's going to happen there, but it is a safety issue and it's going to be resolved and it will make things so much safer for people to walk the tracks, out of the pathways and the trails and go to school. We'll be able to do that in a very safe way. That stuff's important to me. I don't want to see our children in harm's way ever. And we try to think of that, understanding that Spanish Fork City can't fix everything. Grove has to fix some of those things. But I also try to do my best when I'm looking at these and each one of these issues individually. I always listen, I always read the emails and I probably just send them back and say, "Thank for your concern." But I also allow the developers to come, I don't make my decision until, I need to hear their side of their story, always, landowners and everything else. I try to make sure that I hear their story before I say yes, no, do or don't, whatever it takes. I appreciate what's gone on here, the dialect that's gone on. And that's okay. That's the way it should be. Thank you for your time.
Can I quickly clarify? I think I flip-flopped my words, recuse and disclose, and I meant to say disclose, just as in my example.
And I probably, while I'm speaking, I probably should disclose. Since I was 14, I have a problem. I love driving trucks and I'm retired and I have to continue to do that for some reason. It gets in your blood. And right now, I do work for RB Construction, part-time, driving. And RB Construction does do work for Arrive Homes. RB Construction is my employer for part-time. You need to be aware of that. Thank you, Mayor. Anything else?
Mayor, I just, it was asked that we address, so I'll just briefly hit on these. Nate, I appreciate your comments. I would love to get with you, I'm sorry, and I've got a new prescription, so I'm not seeing quite as well as I will after, what, 14 to 24 hours. So I appreciate your comments, so I'd actually would love to get with you. I think some of the concern about mob rule is, that same sentiment, I think, is felt on both sides as words disingenuous and rubber stamping have been thrown this direction. Not necessarily the same meaning as mob rule, but for the general statement to say that it's disingenuous for the council to do something or say something or that it's rubber stamped, I think is equally as damaging as saying, well, you all are the mob rule. And so I would love to talk, you know, talk with you more on that because those comments aren't helpful in either direction. Derek, I would love to be able to visit, talk with you as well. I don't know that, I love the word dichotomy, I don't know that, and I'm not sure where Derek went either, but I don't know that it is a dichotomy because the things, we're talking property rights versus property rights. They're not two separate things and they're not represented as separate things, which by definition is what a dichotomy is. But I think there's a great dialogue to have there and would love to visit with you. The reason why I'm saying I would love to visit separately is there's more discussion that I would love to be able to have with a back-and-forth type of discussion rather than the way that, you know, constitutionally, these meetings are set up, that there's public hearing, which we had two weeks ago, and then we give comments. It doesn't afford for that back-and-forth exchange, which I thrive on, quite frankly. I love personal interaction, as you could tell from my excitement in the process, our last meeting. So I have Nate's email. Derek, I'm not sure if I... Derek, I'm not sure if I received one or not from you, I've received so many, but I will try to reach out as well. Tyler, your concern about density and traffic, that is one of the principal reasons as to why I'm voting. The way I'm voting today is my concern of traffic and getting it fixed. I received an email yesterday about the concern and need for additional crossing guards. And that's something that I will take up and look at, that need and how to get that fixed. And then, I'm sorry, there's the military in me, the female, I don't mean that disparagingly. I was writing down the last of Tyler's comments and I didn't catch, there you are, I didn't catch your name. So I'm saying the female because I know it was, I don't mean that disparagingly. Again, I would love to visit with you as well, again, just to be able to have that free exchange rather than any type of, you know, pulpit, you know, Deus type of comments. It was asked before and I had tried to do it the last meeting and I'll try to do it again. The reasons I'm voting are for the traffic and trying to fix the traffic, for the children's safety. It was mentioned in an email that myself, other members of the council are actually voting and putting intentionally children in harm's way. It's not an exact quote, but we are intentionally putting children in harm's way by catering to the desires of developer. I can show you 17 years almost of teaching school. Children's safety is first and foremost in my mind. Safety of the public, because of other hats I wear, is always first and foremost in my mind. The problem that I'm faced with is my decision today may or may not conflict with your decision as to how you would, how you would vote in this regard. There have been comments that have been made from individuals, I won't say from your community, but from individuals within our community that have said, well, if you don't vote a particular way, then you're not who should represent me and I will see to it that you're voted out. And if you remember, two weeks ago, I said, please do. My identity is not tied to this position that I serve in. This is an opportunity for me to serve. I don't know if I'd mentioned it, but after 2009, when I returned from Afghanistan, the community was very supportive of my family and I wanted to be able to give back. And so if someone wants to be able to give back in this fashion, I will gladly tell you how to campaign and how to go about doing it. My identity is not tied into this position. And so any inference or threats of, well, I'll vote you out, that is where I get excited and I am genuine at that because that is our governmental process. And it excites me, the fact that I may or may not be here anytime I run for a campaign. That being said, because of the area where it's at, because there's a big empty space where the trucking school exists, right to the south, what would that be, southwest of it on that diagonal, because it's between a high school and an M A T C. For me, I see it differently than certainly Councilmember Beck. I'm not beholden to a developer, since we're into the, what, the disclosures, all right? I disclose, I'm an officer, a soldier in the Army National Guard. This has nothing to do with the Army nor the National Guard. I'm an educator with Neebo School District and this has nothing to do with that. The only thing I can disclose is I'm a citizen of Spanish Fork and this has everything to do with me as a citizen in Spanish Fork because the laws that I pass affect me today, affect me in 10 years, and affect each of us during that time as well. I just simply see it differently. It doesn't mean that you haven't been heard, it just means I may not be voting the way you would like. And I know that's difficult for us to be able to sometimes understand or have that dialogue. I think sometimes, the time that I've been on the council, the discussions that I've had with people is that if you don't vote the way I have asked you to, you did not listen to me. And that clearly is not the case. As I mentioned, just from tonight, I would love to sit down with each of you that spoke and I have emails from others that I fully intend to be able to try to visit with if you would like further clarification. I simply see it differently as a way to be able to fix the traffic problems. As I mentioned before the vote, the city can't build the road, can't widen the road, can't build the sidewalks, development can. And I heard you that traffic right now is horrible. Traffic is bad in that area. The mechanism as a city to be able to fix and affect that traffic is through development because development is what makes the road wider, paves for the sidewalks, affords those types of things to allow that infrastructure to grow. The city can't do that. And so for those reasons, I see it differently. I see it as a way to try to fix the problem that exists. There are other issues there that I've kind of read into the emails that may or may not be true, that in those individual discussions, I would love to ask and try to find out more. But as best as we can, we don't lecture, we just simply try to share with you what we're thinking and then try to find solutions. Like I mentioned, I will be trying to find a solution for a crossing guard or several if needed, but at least trying to find out how best to, you know, to have that extra care for the kids as they go through. That's all, Mayor.
Okay.
For me, is that okay, Mayor? I had somewhere probably I should have been tonight with my daughter at the emergency room, but I chose to be here because this is important and my wife says she's okay. Thank you to Mr. Anderson at the high school, giving her an EpiPen when something that's never happened in our family. But this was important to be here tonight and so she said, go and be there. A little over a year ago, I met in a house in the neighborhood and tried to listen, probably gave more false hope than I needed to. I should have done more listening instead of, like I say, maybe giving out more of what I was going to vet throughout the process. I've never seen a development go this long from just whittling down and getting to the finished product. To answer Tyler's question, I don't have what I would consider a conflict of interest. I just know Dean from what he's done at the city. I'm an insurance agent by day. I do not do any business with Arrive Homes or Dean Ingram. But for me, nothing has changed since my last vote and other than hearing from some friends that live in Leland, I still call it that, I call them the old timers that live out there. They, you know, talked about developing their land and the challenges that they saw throughout the process as the area that's along the river came in and all of those things that, you know, it's crazy to sound, but a couple of them were like, we didn't want even, you know, 30 acre lots. I just moved yesterday and today, I'm still in the process of moving across town from a 3rd acre lot home to a 3rd acre lot home. We started in a townhome before we built the home that we just closed on selling today and moved from. We lived in a townhome across the train tracks. We had two vehicles at the time and now we have four and sometimes a fifth vehicle at our home. Our next-door neighbor had eight. And we're in that demographic now in our subdivision where every single, all over the streets. And so for me, I put that math together and thought 55 units times two in my mind versus, you know, if it was 25 homes times four. To me, at some point, the traffic to me sticks out the same. I spent a lot of my career working for Valley Asphalt and then for Staker Parsons after that. And so I know roads and was very interested in getting this project done by ALA to help the kids. And when I've talked to some of the administration at ALA and to hear the 1,800 students say thank you for the improvements that would take place, that's important to me. I know a lot of children that go there personally and I think maybe some of you have children that go there. So that was what helped my vote if I didn't explain it better two weeks ago, but that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, I would entertain a vote, a motion, excuse me.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number Z12-20, an ordinance changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Del Monte Zone change. This ordinance would change the zoning of the subject property from industrial 2 to R3.
I'm motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by...
Second.
Councilman Scobes. This will be a roll call vote. Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
No.
Councilmember Beck.
No.
All right, so the way it works, if there is a tie vote with the council, I get to vote. And so someone's asked me how I would vote and my feeling is, like I said, I represent all of Spanish Fork. And I've read everything, all the emails, I've taken calls, the people have called, and I've tried to study out the issue. I've watched planning and zoning. We've, this has been going on for a long time, for a year plus. And so when people say, well, we just haven't had enough time, I think we've had a long time. And they say, you don't hear us, well, I think the developer did hear you. This went from a 66 unit down to a 55 unit, didn't have garage, now they have all garage. So you, he has listened to you, he has tried to improve that. And so as I look at all the, my situation, my vote will be yes. So that gets approved. All right, let's move down to C. Consideration and vote on proposed preliminary plat for Arrived Del Monte Townhome, a 55 master plan development located at approximately 1,100 South Del Monte Road on a 5.95 acre I would entertain a motion.
Can I ask for a kind of clarification?
Nope. It's in a public hearing unless you want us to do that.
It's up to you, Jeremy. It's not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing, okay? I'd entertain a motion.
I move we approve the preliminary plat for Arrived Del Monte Townhomes, 55 home master plan development located approximately 1,100 South Del Monte Road on a 5.95 acre parcel.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, a second by Councilman Gordon. This also will be a roll call vote. Oh, sorry. Go for it. Didn't see you there.
54 homes. The latest plan that we have is 54. Yes.
54 homes, will you amend that?
I apologize for the confusion that we had on that.
Okay, so it's 54 home.
Mayor, I make an amendment to my motion to reflect 54 home master plan development.
Second.
You're still got a second. Roll call vote, Councilman Argal.
No.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
No.
And it goes to me and I vote yea. So that approves. Okay, D. Rental Spucker Anexation Acceptance for Further Study.
Can you go to the next image for us, Nick? So this could be better, for sure. This property is located out near the Salem Benjamin Interchange. It's about 35 acres. Just slightly outside of this window that we see here to the bottom right-hand corner side is the Revere Health facility on the other side of the road in Salem. So I think that's the best landmark to use in the area to kind of get a feel for where this property is. Does that make sense? Anybody have any questions then about at least the general area? It's right on the main road, heading out to the interchange. The heavy dashed line that you see in the image there, just on the right-hand side of what's in yellow, the yellow is the area included in the proposed annexation, that's the current city boundary. So what's proposed is contiguous with the existing city boundary there. And what's before the council tonight is simply a proposal to accept the concept of annexing the property for further study. We've been through this for a few times, so I think you're probably familiar with it, but I'll touch on a couple of the details there anyway. Should you proceed to accept the annexation tonight for further study, that simply starts a formal process of review to where we as staff send notices to some different entities that is consistent with state law and requirements that cities are obligated to complete before properties are annexed. It starts a protest period that all in all results potentially in this coming back to you in probably about three or four months on an agenda with a public hearing to actually consider the proposed annexation and to also consider zoning that would be assigned at the time of annexation. But that all being said, what's before you tonight is simply the idea of potentially accepting this 35 acre area for annexation and that's it.
Will you clarify for me again, where is Revere's property? Is it one that 8,000 South is?
Just, yeah. Did I see another map coming up there? That would be really helpful, probably. So the subject properties are right there and Revere Health is right here, so just down and to the right from what we had there with that other image.
Right, any other questions? Geography.
I'll move that we approve the Reynolds Spucker an annexation for further study.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Beck, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Republic Service Contract.
Mayor and council, this item is for a solid waste collection agreement. We have a current agreement with Republic Services, we're in the last year of that agreement. So this is for a new agreement for five years with an additional city option for a three-year extension. Let me just give you some of the key facts. All the waste would be taken to the transfer station, the South Utah Valley Special Waste, Solid Waste District Transfer Station. The pricing for the trash is, the first receptacle is $4.51, the second is $3.35. Recycling is tiered based on how many people participate in the recycling. So I didn't give you all of those, but that's in the agreement there. There's a 3% inflation provision that happens each year. There's also a fuel adjustment provision where it increases three cents for each 10 cents increase in the diesel prices, either up or down. And then finally, the city pays the tipping fees that are associated with the trash at the transfer station. Any questions about that agreement?
I was involved with a meeting with Max Sabey and Chris Thompson to review these proposals and that's just the best of the proposals.
Yeah, I should mention that there was an RFP for, to consider other providers and this Republic was the best.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move we approve the Republic Services contract.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes.
Second.
Second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, public hearing, Blue Ox Zone Change.
I don't know how this ended to be this early on an agenda. We've talked with a few times the applicant before in different meetings and they've been late nights. They've been on the tail end of some lengthy agendas before. That's my best joke that I have about anything ever. That's it, so. That being said, the proposal is to change the zoning on some properties, about 12 acres located on South Main Street or just off of South Main Street. Subject property is outlined in yellow there. The area between the subject property and Main Street is the wetland that the city developed three or four, maybe now five years ago. So once again, that's kind of the landmark that I would use to describe what we're talking about and where it's at. The property is within the city limits, so we're talking about zoning instead of maybe changing the general plan. changing the general plan or something like that. There's been quite a bit of discussion about this, which is a proposed zone change or otherwise developing the property. So I'm just going to cut to the chase and describe the Development Review Committee's recommendation, which is to deny the proposed zone change. In this case, the Planning Commission's recommendation was consistent with the Development Review Committee's recommendation. The basis of their recommendations to deny the proposed request involve the subject property, first of all, being outside of the city's growth boundary, and the subject property being within the flood plain. And then lastly, you're very familiar, I think everybody, with the work that has been going on for a while now, relative to the prospect of the city adopting some type of a new vision for the entire River Bottoms area, inasmuch as that still is a work in progress, and frankly, I really do think we're getting to the tail end of that. But with that not yet being complete, that also was found to be a reason to deny the proposed request by both the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission.
Hey, any questions?
So recently, they had R4R3 zones, they just want R16, one zone.
Yeah, the request that's before you tonight is to change the zoning to R16. And in fact, the applicants have provided the concept plan that you have attached as part of the staff report to, I think, give you at least an idea as to what they'd like to do should the zone change be approved and they be allowed to proceed with the development.
All right. This is a public hearing, so I'd entertain going to a public hearing, a motion to go into public hearing.
So move.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes.
Second.
Second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in a public hearing. Anyone that'd like to come and address this issue, you're sure welcome to come up. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
Salute.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I would, any comments or questions?
I guess I just have one comment probably for Blue Ox, because I know, I don't know who wants to answer me, but years ago, probably three years ago, Brandon, and I met with you, and you were proposing this at that time. So I think my question, as I've just been reading through this and watching it come through planning and zoning, is why are you bringing it back when we're so close to getting the TDR situation worked out? Does that make sense, my question?
I'm going to rephrase it, I think I understand it, but you're looking at this and saying, "Hey, we're almost to the finish line on this new concept. You've already been here once, we told you no, why are you coming back again?"
Yeah, why not wait just a little bit longer?
And that's fair. And I think, a couple of key points that I want to call out on this is answer to your question. And I'm sorry, I'm really grateful not to be at the end of the agenda. So while that may have been funny for Dave, for me, it's a sincere thank you. We are here, basically, when we came before, you know, we were looking at a broader concept and scope of not only this property, but other property within the River Bottoms. We were looking for a density that would allow us to do townhomes on this property that was outside of what you had in your general master plan. And so, at this point, we're coming back saying, "Hey, you know, two point is, the past developer on those other townhomes heard the comments that were made." We're coming back effectively saying the same thing. We heard the comments that were made. We're not asking for townhomes, we're trying to do something that is first and foremost conforming to your general plan. And, you know, yes, it's outside of your growth boundary, but, you know, the growth boundary, I am not sure when and how that's set, but we know that that's a soft boundary that gets moved frequently, just like your annexation boundary does, and that's largely tied to your utility services. Utilities, for all intensive purposes, with the exception of sewer, are on our doorstep. Sewer's a little bit different, but we've had conversations with neighboring property owners that are within your growth boundary, that have an interest in getting easements, and we've had conversations about them getting a sewer easement through our property. The idea that we can't develop because of some utility constraints. Staff, as they've talked to us, have clearly represented that that's an issue that can be overcome with proper planning. And so, we're here saying, "Hey, this is conforming to your master plan, number one." And number two, prior to my time, and prior to many of the time of the people here, there was a contract that was negotiated in good faith that clearly stipulated that development would be taking place in this area, not only on this specific parcel, but other parcels surrounding it. And so, we're coming saying, "Hey, development was anticipated, it was planned for, it was agreed to. The only variable was the exact layout and scope of that development." And so, we've tried to narrow that scope and do something that's conforming to both your general plan that is in place, not something that hypothetically maybe get approved in the future, but something that is in place, planned for, anticipated for, as well as what was agreed to and anticipated in some form in this agreement that we've had previously negotiated with good faith with the city. I wasn't here when that was negotiated. We do have our attorney here who was participatory in that, so if there's specific questions with that agreement, I'm sure he would love to answer those. But we're looking at, you know, we talk about landowners and what we expect, you know, we purchased the property, had expectations based on a master plan, based on a contract with the city that we could develop. That's not to say that we disagree with the hard work of your city and their planning. And quite frankly, despite my conflict with this, or perceived conflict with the city on this specific parcel, I'm a big fan of Spanish Fork. I like what you guys have done, I like the attitudes that are represented in these meetings. And, you know, I salute you guys for the hard work that you take in the, you know, I get teased frequently by my colleagues about the arrows that I take in the back. And you guys know as well as I do, I'm not the only one taking arrows. You guys take plenty, and so I appreciate the hard decisions that you guys make. But we purchased this, acquired it with full intention of some kind of development. It wasn't a question of if, it was only a question of how. And so, the reason we're back is because we think that we have some entitlement and some ability to get developed. Now, that's probably the best way I could answer that, is not to be disingenuous to your efforts or the hard work of your staff. I think they're doing a great job in many respects.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions? What are you doing to address the flood plain?
The flood plain is kind of a new thing that we've been talking about on this specific parcel. When we originally looked at the map and in conversations with Dave Anderson, it was not understood or intended that that was in the flood plain. So I need some clarification on that, regardless of whether it is or isn't. We believe that there's some options in our conversations with soils engineers and our civil engineer to mitigate that sufficiently. But that would be a separate question that if we had the ability to move forward, we'd work through and be back here again saying, "Hey, this is our solution, do you like it or not?" And you can say no at that point, but as a point that's, flood plains get mitigated all the time. Sometimes it's done well, sometimes not so well. And we recognize that as a concern, and whether we are or aren't, I think there's some clarity that we need that we just haven't gone through the effort to get since this is a new item for us.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. All right, if not, I would entertain a motion.
Sorry, my question actually is for Dave, at least, and I know you said you have your council here. My question, a contract, I'm just kind of curious about that, because you can't tie the hands, if this happened before, either all of us or most of us, you can't tie the hands of a future council as far as what, you know, land use and what takes place. So I'm just kind of curious, what do we know of that contract? And I'd rather reach to my person first rather than council, just because of familiarity, not because of distrust. So, please explain something to that.
I'm probably not the city's expert on the contract, so I can either punt right away, or I guess I'll take a quick stab at how I understand it and how it's been explained to me and how I've read it over the years. Was it certainly that the contract to purchase the property that is now the wetlands, which is what we're talking about, which incidentally, that property was part of the subject property at one point in the time, at one point back in time before it was split for that purpose. It contemplates two different paths. One that would indeed lead to the subject property being developed, probably in a more dense fashion than what we're talking about tonight, or a separate track which would involve the city paying a predetermined sum to the property owner. I don't recall exactly when it happened, I want to say it was a couple of years ago. The city opted for the track that involved, pardon me. Oh, thank you. Thank you. So, the property owner opted for the track that involved being paid for the property versus pursuing the development option, and that's how we understand the city has fulfilled the obligation that the city held relative to that contract. So, in terms of moving forward from this point, relative to development approval or any type of entitlements, I understand that that contract is irrelevant. Is that safe to say? Again, I'm probably not the expert on that, but.
Okay.
This is not in the city limits, right?
This is in the city limits, so in fact, you see that heavy dashed line again. In this case, everything that's to the left of that line on the image is in the city.
Okay, so this is in the city, currently is in the city limits.
Correct.
Yes.
Unlike much of what we talk about as being part of the River Bottoms, this is unique in that respect, and that it's in the city today.
Any other questions?
No, Mayor, I just, I think to owe you the same courtesy as the citizens in trying to get better at communicating that. I don't know at this point in time that I would be ready to make any type of change to the zone, being that we have a study that will either support what you're doing or may afford other options, that it sounds like the contract would have either, my word, a release, you know, I don't know the legal jargon. So, I don't know that I would be voting in favor of it for those reasons, because there is something, looking at a bigger picture of how we may envision the River Bottoms to be, in which case it sounds like you won't, you'll be monetarily compensated, it sounds like it's part of that contract if it doesn't agree with to whatever your plan. So I just want to at least make that clear. At least for now, that's kind of where I'm looking, is I'm just not quite ready, at least to make that zone change yet. Mayor.
Thank you. Any more comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move, where'd it go? I move to deny the proposed zone change, and I'll use the findings that are there, mine falls into it. On the following findings, the property is located outside the growth boundary, River Bottoms Vision Project is in process, and it's premature to act on the proposal until it is complete, and that the property is located within the flood plain.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. N B, ordinance 13-20, changing the general plan designation and amending the official gen, general plan map of Spanish Fork for the Hearst General Plan Amendment.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. We need to look at a couple of different images to understand exactly what's proposed tonight, and in all candor, this is something that, from my perspective, indeed could morph to a degree, you know, however you'd feel is appropriate. Initially, I think it's worth understanding that the property that's identified here in yellow, which the street that you can see that runs kind of left or right, or east or west on this image, just to the north of the subject property, that's Canyon Road. The other street that you see, I can't recall the coordinate of that, apologize, can you help me with that?
1530 South.
What was that, Mayor?
1530 South.
1530 South, which, I mean, this is way, way out on the east end of town, not far from where Canyon Road intersects with US Highway 6. The development that Salisbury constructed over the course of what seemed like a couple of weeks here last year, it's just to the north of this on the other side of Canyon So, once again, Mr. Porter, thank you. So this is the general area that we're talking about, again, out east into town. The end goal that the applicant has is to develop that property that's outlined in yellow. I think that's just about four acres in size. In order to develop the way that they've proposed, which would be to do a subdivision so that it would be a collection of 6,000 square foot lots, perhaps something that would look like what we see there, they would need to have the zoning changed to R16. Now, we've ended up talking about the general plan, a little bit more in recent meetings than we typically have. This proposal is an example of something that conflicts with the existing general plan designation. So for that reason, the applicants are before the council tonight requesting that the general plan be amended. That's the request that's before you, so we're not talking about a proposed zone change, we're not talking about any development approval, we're just talking about changing the land use map of the general plan. This is the current zoning, incidentally, not only of the subject property, but also the properties that are between it and Canyon Road. It's, it kind of stands out, it's a little bit unique to the surrounding properties. Undoubtedly, it's a historic remnant of what's existed for quite some time, being zoned rural residential, that's that green shade that we see on that image there. The zoning of the surrounding properties on this particular side, the south side of Canyon Road, that's R112. Can you go to the next image for us? So this is the general plan map, so hopefully, you know, everybody can stay oriented with what we're seeing here. And I think maybe a helpful way to describe what exists simply is to say that the proposed, I'm sorry, the current general plan designation for the subject property matches everything to the south and to the west. So all of those subdivisions that have been developed in the R112 zone, they're in the same low-density residential general plan designation as the subject property. So you can see, and this may be inherently then, that distinct difference between R112, you know, which is primarily 12,000 square foot lots, and what the applicants want to do here, which is 6,000 square foot lots, that necessitates something like what we can see with the next image, which is perhaps to change the general plan map to identify a different designation for the subject property. And this is, you know, where I think certainly things could be modified, just like I mentioned, according to whatever you think is best. But in order for staff to recommend that a zone change be approved to R16, the general plan map would have to be amended to at least the medium-density residential designation for the subject property, and as much we're talking about, a map that is intended to be the city's vision for future development and future growth, land use-wise, as if maybe we're looking from 5,000 or 10,000 feet above, you know, looking very broadly. Generally speaking, we don't zero in on individual properties when we're talking about that broad vision for the future. So, you can see that at least one thing that we've suggested as staff is that a potential amendment could include not only the subject property, but perhaps also those properties between it and Canyon Road, which would afford those property owners some additional options if they ever wanted to, to change the use of their property at any point in the future. So, that all being said, I feel like maybe it's a good time for me to ask if you have any questions before I finish with one other thought.
Do you have another thought?
Okay.
Go ahead.
So. So, in terms of the specific proposal, I hope you feel like I often don't punt, I feel a responsibility to come to you with some type of a recommendation. We try to base those recommendations on fact and to be able to justify them. With what the applicant has proposed here, 6,000 square foot lots on a property that I think certainly is ready for a land use change, is how I would describe it. It's the only property that really has development potential in an area where everything around it, to one degree or another, has been developed. You certainly could do a development there with 6,000 square foot lots, that would be great, that would be an asset to the neighborhood, and I think that in different ways, people would appreciate. In all candor, at the same time, you could do a development with 9,000 square foot lots, or 12,000 square foot lots, and from the city's perspective, from a land use perspective, likewise, it would be great for the area and the neighborhood. I don't think the impact on anybody would necessarily be greater, we're not talking about a situation where I think traffic is a consideration, or providing utility services or anything like that. Truly, I think this is a situation where it's a very subjective call, that ultimately you, as the land use authority, the city council, on considering things like this, it's your call, but truly, I think a lot of different options would work just fine. Obviously, the property owner has a preference here, and typically, we give that considerable weight. The only other thing that I think probably would fall in favor of considering this is that, I think in all likelihood, should having this property be developed, be, you know, something that's motivating for you, the higher the density, the higher the likelihood would be that it's going to happen, and that it's going to happen quickly. So, there, you know, that might be, depending on how you feel about it, one reason to support the request. So, that's what I have. I'll also mention that the Planning Commission reviewed this, they recommended that it be approved, and we, as the DRC, you know, collectively, we opted to really rely heavily on the Planning Commission's recommendation as we discussed this, so that's how it comes to the council.
All right. Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing. A motion by Councilman Argal. Seconded by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye. Anyone that'd like to address this issue on the Hearst zone change? I'm way, all the way from the back.
Hi, my name is Zilia Lopez, and I live just about a block away from that proposed change. And so, really quickly, I come from another state, I came from a very large city, and one of the reasons I came out to Utah, especially here in Spanish Fork, was because of the open space. If you've grown up here in Utah and lived all your life here in Spanish Fork in this area, you don't know what it's really like to live in a big city. And I really like it here, and I like that open space, and this is my first time being in a meeting here in the city, and I appreciate all your time that you put in the community. But, just as a personal note, I would give caution to high-density or medium-density housing. Again, personally, coming from a big city, you really appreciate that green space, that park that you just opened this week is absolutely beautiful. This is something that I would have loved in the city I grew up in. Again, what you said, someone said, a 9,000, 10,000, 12,000 square foot lot, that sounds fabulous, 6,000 square feet, that's small. And, again, I feel like Spanish Fork, I get this feeling that there's this Tetris model, you have all these open, small lots, five acres, 10 acres, and I feel like it's this Tetris kind of a thing that you're trying to fit in, either some condos, or a PUD, or something, and the area that I live in, you know, you've got 9,000, 10,000 square foot lots. It would be nice that if that development would mesh and match the other part of the neighborhood. Canyon Road, there's a lot of traffic now, it connects with the six, I feel like it's the annexation of the six, there's a lot of traffic, I try to come out on Canyon Road, I need speed bumps on my street, there's a lot of people that drive very fast, it's very hard now to get out, you have a lot of 18-wheelers coming down Canyon Road, so I just feel that the more that you bring in people, I understand that cities want to grow, they need the tax revenue, I get it, I know, but I would caution, I'm just saying, as someone who is new to Spanish Fork, I would caution you bringing in too many people too fast. It's beautiful, you look at the mountains, you look at the open space, the Spanish Fork trails, whoever's in charge of that, my hat goes off to you, they're absolutely beautiful. I can't, I could not do that from where I came from, okay? I just could not walk outside my street in the evening, sorry, just take it, just go slowly. It's beautiful here, and some of us really do want to enjoy that open space. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Miho Chaneski, resident here in Spanish Fork. I'd just like to, I guess, you know, the master, the master plan is an opportunity for you to look at the master plan, is an opportunity to look at the big picture, and to change that master plan, there's got to be a pretty compelling reason. Sticking homes, 6,000 square foot lots, is not, doesn't seem to me as a compelling reason enough to change the master plan, to move away from the, we'll raise the plane a little higher, 30,000-foot view, because it, the, you know, the time to decide medium-density, high-density, that's when the master plan is built, not when somebody comes in with a land use idea that doesn't fit that plan, so let's go ahead and kind of move some more chess pieces around. So, I would encourage the council to vote to keep the, to stay with the master plan as is, because that's what it is, and just kind of stick with the, with the big picture for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing. Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye. Any questions or comments on this proposed?
Dave, I have a question for you. So, is there, I know with the Del Monte Townhomes, that we have a study that's going on to take a look at.
General map, general plan for that area, is that something, is that something we can do? I guess my thought is, and as I'm thinking through this, because that's been a recurring theme, that people don't always know what we're thinking necessarily, my thought is, it's been expressed tonight already, that 18, 18 units at 6,000 is too many, that's what's been expressed. If you cut that in half, nine units to 12,000, you know, to 12,000 square feet, so that's nine, which is what's allowed currently, can you go to 10,000, which is what is currently? Is that correct?
No.
Okay, so, the 12,000 is?
You could say it's a fairly healthy jump, you know, from one end of the next range to where the applicant's proposed to be, which is on the high end, in terms of the number of units per acre.
Sure.
That they could have with that medium-density designation, what's proposed, excuse me, which is what's proposed. Does that make sense? So, it is a significant jump.
It does, it does. Given the scope of the project, and again, just as I'm thinking through, for those that share, I always forget where people sit down.
I recognize, okay, there we go. 18 units at the 6,000, but it was mentioned that the 10,000 would be acceptable, which would put it at 14, maybe 15 units. So, it's a three-unit difference between what the applicant is requesting and what at least public comment so far has said is acceptable. Three units, I don't see three units as increasing the traffic exponentially on Canyon, it's a state road, it feeds out to Highway six, and so that, the size I don't see as an issue because of its location. Now, you're saying it's a big jump, which I agree, if it were a larger project, I'm just not seeing a three-unit difference for that. That being said, I hate to delay a project over three units, but we're looking at master, at the master plan already, I, I'm not ready to make a motion yet, but I would be in favor of at least taking a look. Are there other areas? Because there will be onesies, twosies, oh, well, if this passes tonight, okay, great, then I also want to look at that, and I think it's important for us to get ahead of that if there are other areas like this in the city where that medium-density might be a better fit, that we look at the, that we look at the general plan, the master plan that way. It's just kind of my thoughts, I'm not making a motion, I just, you know, on one hand, three units, just, it doesn't make sense, you know, necessarily stop this project, and maybe a hybrid where we allow the project, this one, because it's, you know, three units doesn't, doesn't impact the traffic, but that maybe a moratorium while we study the remaining medium-density is kind of where I'm, what I'm thinking.
May I just add a couple of thoughts? I really appreciate some of the points that you raised there, so just for, again, the sake of clarity, and sometimes we get lost in the details of, you know, phraseology that people don't understand, but yet, it matters from a regulatory perspective, and I'm just going to put it this way, there are a handful of options that are on the table for the ultimate development of this property, and I think we're here tonight as staff, I think the applicant, the applicant's here, the property owner was here in the Planning Commission meeting, I think we're here, neighbors, obviously, they've been invited to come, sent a letter suggesting that they attend to provide their comments, you know, ultimately to try to decide whether this property should be developed with, let's just say, a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet, or maybe a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet, or 9,000 square feet, or 12,000 square feet. Now, if it's 12,000 square feet, then you can deny the proposal, and they can still move forward. That is to say, you can deny the proposal that's on your agenda tonight, and they could still move forward and request that the zoning be changed from that rural residential zone to the R112 zone, staff would recommend that that be approved, my guess is, is that the Planning Commission would as well, and you'd see that in some future meeting in that form. To consider any of the other three options, we would recommend that you amend the general plan, but you're not even required to do that. Certainly, if you amended the general plan to permit the applicant to proceed forward with a zone change request for either R16, R18, or R19 zoning, that clearly sends a signal to everybody that's involved about what your intentions would be when that application for zone change and subdivision approval would work its way back to one of your future agendas, like I said, as well, you know, probably in the next couple of months. So, we look tonight for you to help us just kind of zero it down to that degree with the understanding that this is a very preliminary step, but we'd like to take as much of the guesswork out of it for everybody moving forward. I appreciate the idea of study and review, and we will do whatever you'd like us to do, but like I said, you know, we're not going to come back having analyzed a traffic concern, or a property value concern, or anything like that, with more helpful information than what we can tell you tonight. I mean, really, I think this is just about, you know, what you feel is best for the property. Certainly, if you'd like to maybe visit the site, study it further, or something like that, that's entirely appropriate, you know, you could continue this tonight and take some more time to think it through, and if there is any information that you'd like us as staff to collect, we could do that and provide it. Is that helpful, just kind of understanding what those different scenarios would be from a zoning perspective? So, maybe just to try to add a little bit finer point yet, if you tonight were to approve the proposed general plan amendment, but set as part of the discussion, you know, that collectively, you wouldn't feel comfortable approving a zone change to R16, or at least you're guessing that you wouldn't, and you could give us some clue as to how to proceed with that, but maybe R18 or R19, so care, you mentioned like hybrid or something like that, that might sync up with that concept, and that would be great feedback, I think, for everybody involved to get, just to be, you know, as forthright and open, and as easy for everybody to understand as we go through the remaining part of the approval process and getting something ready for, like I said, a future agenda.
I appreciate it.
Oh, yes, please, you're the applicant, yeah. Thanks for waking me up.
Thank you, my name is Sean Hanson with Bionic Construction, and I've been working with the landowner, and then another partner of mine, as a, to develop this, and just a couple of things to start off with. So, when we first brought this to the city and the staff, it was probably November of last year, and they said, and at this point in time, we're looking at it through the lens of watching the Salisbury go up, and we're thinking, you know, and which is basically right across the street from this property, and so at that point, we're looking at the density that they had on theirs, realizing there's a little bit of a difference, and the feedback that we got initially, and this is in December, from the Planning Commission, was, they said, you know, we see where you're at, go talk to your neighbors. And so, at that point, we went, we did some talking to the neighbors, and then we went through various steps, and what we kind of came up with, it was essentially this, this plan that you see up there, and just one of the items there, so our very smallest lots are 6,000, but there's only about a third of those lots are 6,000 square feet, we have certain lots in there that are over 13,000 square feet, and so, what, and that's one of the things that we're looking at for various sizes, and if you take actually the average size, if you averaged all the lots out, it's over 8,000 square feet, just over 8,000. And so, it gives a variable, you know, some people have the small yards, and some people have the big yards, and that's kind of what we came up with, and then with our design, if there's a little bit of a heel that it comes off, you know, from being up on Canyon Road, it comes down a little bit, and so, we're a little tucked back in there as a pocket, and this, with the, the way that it's set up with the cul-de-sac, we feel pretty good about, but again, this is another, it's an infill project, so sometimes we're a little bit limited on that, and so, that being, kind of setting the table on that, the last, when we were in the Planning Commission, a couple of weeks ago, one of the things that came up, not with our project, but there were some R19 developments, some developments in the R19 zone, and with those, they actually, in certain circumstances, they can have lots less than what the R19 value, you know, and so, this is a little bit of a juxtaposition of that, because we're kind of coming in and saying, we're asking for the R16, but really, there's about a third on that, the, I guess, to the south, some of those lots are the ones that are the 6,000 square foot lots, and we're saying, our very smallest lots are this, but overall, our lots are about 8,000 square feet, and so, we did have a little bit, we had a Zoom call, just thanks to COVID, for our community, and we did hear some of that, but we do feel that it is within, and so, the medium-density, I think, is a little bit scarier than what our project actually is. Now, you know, you're a little bit trying to fit, you know, fit it in to Now, you know, you're a little bit trying to fit, you know, fit it into what the ordinances are. And so with that being said, we feel it's a great product for the community. It's about half the density that you have just down the other side of the Canyon Road with the Salisbury, which did go up very quick, which to us indicates that there is, you know, there's market demand for this type of housing. These will all be single-family homes, and we intend to, you know, there'll be smaller lots and then larger lots, but they'll be built with, you know, good craftsmanship, and we think that various different family sizes and makeups can live happily there and, you know, and choose the lot that works best for them. So that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you for letting me express that, so if there's any questions on anything.
Any other questions, Chair?
There's no HOA for this at all, is there?
No, there isn't.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I'm just leaning a little bit more towards leaving it, the R-112. I like what Mrs. Lopez said, that just, you know, every nook and cranny, don't try and kind of play this Tetris game of fitting higher density in every open piece. So I'm leaning more towards sticking with the R-112 and maybe doing 9,000 and above, even though, I like your point though, care, that you said it's only a difference of three properties, so that doesn't make a huge difference at times, but it does give you a little bit more elbow room, and I know the market is demanding higher density, but I feel like right now Spanish Fork has that in other parts of the city, so kind of how I feel.
Any other comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion, one way or the other.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 1320, changing the general plan designation and amending the official general plan map of Spanish Fork City for the Hearst general plan amendment.
A motion by Councilman Scobes.
Second.
Second by Councilman Argal. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilman Beck.
No.
That passes. Okay. Ordinance ZO8-20, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zone map of Spanish Fork for the Ridge Phase 6 and 7 Zone Change.
Just east of the neighborhood Walmart, kind of around in the corner of Spanish Fork Parkway, where there's the lighted intersection at US Highway 6, so at Spanish Fork Parkway and US 6, there's a townhome development. Hopefully, everybody is familiar with that. That's called The Ridge. The Ridge has been under construction now for a number of years, and what's before you tonight is a proposal to add some land to that development. This is something that staff has been discussing with the applicant for a number of years. They've worked out some land acquisition issues that maybe I'll let them speak more to, but I know have taken quite a bit of time. And this is a good image to illustrate just the general area that we're talking about. So there is the building that's owned by the LDS Church just on the east side of 2550 East. As proposed, the additional land that would be incorporated into The Ridge would really create a horseshoe kind of configuration all the way around that building, going from a connection to 2550 East, north of the building, and back down on the south side on the south. This is a little bit of, I think, kind of an interesting configuration. You can still see that church there just on the upper end of this image here, that yellow area that's adjacent to that on the south, that's one section that's proposed to be added to The Ridge. So Mr. Porter, maybe instead with the mouse, if you can point to the other blob, yeah, that, as proposed, that would be developed with single-family homes. So a very distinct product from what currently is offered in The Ridge, and we'll talk more about that in a minute. The other part, which is simply separated from what I was just talking about with the single-family homes, from what is now part of The Ridge, a connection that they currently have in place down to Canyon Road, where they have a row of townhomes under construction now, this would add space that's east of that as well to give them an opportunity to develop. I think it's another six or eight buildings there on that side of that road that, again, connects down to Canyon Road. So that being said, the majority of The Ridge is currently zoned R3. The R3 zone is consistent with the city's general plan for the area, and the proposal would simply have those two areas that were just outlined in yellow also zoned R3. So that's sort of step one here relative to the request. The second step involves approving an amended preliminary plat that we're going to have a hard time, I'm afraid, maybe really getting a feel for specifically what we're talking about, at least for us in the room. So again, we're talking about this area here, which would be developed with single-family homes, this area here, which would be developed with townhomes. We've included images of the proposed designs in the staff report. I frankly really appreciate the effort that the applicant has put into design with his current phases. It's a little bit different from what we've typically seen in Spanish Fork relative to some kind of a multifamily type of product. Likewise, I think it's really in vogue throughout the rest of the country, kind of a contemporary style that they've followed. The design for the single-family homes fits in well with that, I would say. I think it would integrate very well with the rest of the development. The townhomes that are proposed, I think, are simply identical to one of the styles that's already being built in The Ridge. And, you know, for whatever it's worth, I don't think this was by design at all, but the fire station, it's got a little bit of a unique architectural flavor to it. I think what these folks are doing really meshes well with that also. One last thing to touch on relative to their proposal with the single-family part of it, I'm just going to speak from my perspective and opinion. I think we found that once we get to certain lot sizes, and I think it's unique to South Utah County, it becomes a challenge really to expect everybody in a neighborhood to maintain their property in a way that everybody else in the neighborhood appreciates. Talking about lots in the, you know, maybe four or 5,000 square foot range, have a couple of neighborhoods in the city that have some lots of that size, and by the time people take part of their private lot space and they dedicate it to a storage area for a boat or some kind of a trailer or something like that, and, you know, fail to maybe take care of their lawn for just a few weeks or that type of a thing, we really end up with some streetscapes in some neighborhoods that, I think, lose their appeal. I appreciate the applicant here, where instead of following that model with the single-family detached homes, what's proposed is maybe more consistent with what's being done in Annie's Acres, which is distinct from this proposal, because that's really aimed at kind of a main-floor living, empty nester type of a buyer. This isn't that, but yet the proposal is to have uniform yard maintenance, HOA, and that sort of a thing. So even though the density is ratcheted up a little bit on the single-family part from what I think we typically see, I think at the end of the day, it's something that will be easier to appreciate. I think it will be maintained much better over time. And all of that being said, both the Development Review Committee and Planning Commission have recommended that both the proposed zone change and the proposed amended preliminary plat be approved. There was a discussion about several different things, and the Planning Commission meeting, one of the things that they asked the applicant to do before this came to the council was to do kind of one last review of the parking situation and what's being proposed relative to parking. What was proposed to the Planning Commission met the city's requirements for parking. That being said, I think increasingly, honestly, we're finding that our parking requirements, which genuinely are higher than many other communities in Utah County, still probably aren't quite high enough in certain situations, and that's something that we'll be talking more with the council than the Planning Commission about here in the next couple of months. The applicant took some counsel that the Planning Commission gave. He's redesigned some parts of the project a little bit since their meeting, and he's added a number of parking spaces. I felt comfortable recommending to the Planning Commission that they approve it. Feel much, much more comfortable now with the additional parking, and all in all, I think this is a really good continuation of a project that is under construction at the right place in the community, and I really appreciate the addition of that new single-family product as well.
Good deal. We might have another question after the public hearing. So this is a public hearing, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
A motion by Councilman Scobes.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone in the, would like to come and address the mayor of the council on this zoning? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out.
So moved.
And a motion by Councilman Argal.
Second.
Second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions, comments on this proposal?
It's a good place, and I also need to disclose that they are one of my clients at Utah Valley Magazine.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I'll use myself on this vote.
Okay. With that, I'd entertain a motion. Motion to approve ordinance ZO8-20, changing the zone designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Ridge Phase 6 and 7 Zone Change. Do I need to add preliminary plat? Add preliminary plat.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, second by Councilmember Beck. This will be a zone, or a roll call vote. Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilman Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
That passes. All right. Ordinance ZO9-20, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork for the Heritage Farm Zone Change. We're getting close to what you wanted when you first got here. I'm so sorry.
I heard it was 45 minutes later.
Hey, see, look at our, look what we get to do.
I get to look at it every day.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
Again, Mayor, thank you. There are a lot of similarities between the next two proposed developments here. Both involve proposed zone change and proposed preliminary plat approval for master plan developments. This first one is the southernmost of two that are adjacent to 1400 East, just a little bit south of Canyon Road. It might be property that you're pretty familiar with. For years, I've anticipated that this day would come and we'd see some type of development proposal there. First of all, Heritage Farms, like I said, that's the southernmost of these two projects. This one includes just about 17 acres. We as staff reviewed a handful of different concept plans that the applicant prepared. They made frankly some significant changes from what was proposed with the different iterations that we reviewed. That being said, maybe I'll start with this part, relative to the proposed subdivision design, the DRCs, like I said, we've kind of picked that apart and even sort of put it back together again. So this comes to the council with a recommendation for approval of the proposed preliminary plat. The Planning Commission likewise recommended that that be approved. The zone change for us, I would say, is even easier. A part of the property that's included in the proposed development is already zoned R-19, so the remaining part recommending that that be changed to rural residential, I don't think there's another zoning district that would really make any sense at all. So both relative to the proposed plat and the zone change, they come to the council with recommendations for approval. So I want to acknowledge some comments that we received, just kind of late, or at least I got to my emails a little bit late, and want to mention that, and I give this frankly particular deference, where is one of our previous Planning Commission chairmen that shared some insight, that I think oftentimes is very, very, very real and true in terms of the way that the frontage of this property on 1400 East could be developed. He suggested that a very different model from what we're looking at here should be followed, and that's something that certainly I appreciate, the idea maybe that homes should front a road like that instead of have their backs turned to the road with what's proposed here along 1400 East, which is the development of a wall, absolutely no access onto 1400 East but for the two roads that would intersect there, landscape strip, trees, and that type of a thing. We have tried a few different things in recent years along 1400 East. The Ivory Homes development right across the street, I think with the same intentions as what has been suggested, there's a little bit of a different model followed, and to save everybody the boredom of hearing the details, for a lot of different reasons, collectively we as staff have decided that this particular model of not allowing direct driveway access onto 1400 East or even having homes front onto a road like that is best for both this project and the project to the north of it that we'll talk about in a minute. But I certainly acknowledge, you know, the value of that other perspective as well. So that all being said, again, this comes to the council with recommendations for approval.
Hey, thanks, Dave.
I do have a question for Dave before you sit down. Thank you for covering that, because I was going to bring that up with the houses facing 1400. Can you address for me the 9,000 square feet lots?
Yeah.
Because there's several that are not that size, and I think those emails that we've received are some of the concerns of the residents.
Absolutely. We talked about that at some length with the Planning Commission, and the easiest way for me to try to answer those questions, we have two different options that developers are given to develop property. One is what we call a standard subdivision. With that option, a development has to meet minimum zoning requirements for every building lot that's created in the project. So like you probably would guess, like you already understand, with property that would be zoned R-19, like we're talking about here, to do a standard subdivision, you have to have 9,000 square feet minimum on every lot in the project, and you have to meet some specific lot width and lot depth requirements. So let's call it option A, standard subdivision. Our ordinance also gives developers an option of doing what's called a master planned development. We haven't spent a lot of time talking with the council about that in quite a while. I think we made significant changes to that program last, back in, I want to say, 2009. But with that option, we don't look at minimum lot size. Instead, we look at the overall project's number of homes, and there are limits for the number of homes per acre that can be included in projects based on the different zone that a property has. So R-19, it corresponds roughly with the idea that a project with 9,000 square foot lots would have similar total number of homes. R-112, it's the same way. R-115, R-16, whatever it might be. And there is a density number in the city's zoning law that corresponds with each of those different zones. So with that option, the need to meet, for example, that minimum lot width and lot depth requirement, that goes away, as does that minimum lot size requirement, and instead, there's just simply a ceiling that's established. there's just simply a ceiling that's established, and that's what we've looked to developers to, to meet. There are definitely benefits of master planned developments, in my opinion, from a neighborhood design perspective. Developers, for example, when we tell them, hey, you need to, instead of just having two connecting streets to adjoining neighborhoods, you need to have four. It's a lot easier to accomplish those things when that doesn't cost them building lots, as probably would be the case if they're doing a, a standard subdivision. So in master planned developments, some different things like that become a lot easier because that flexibility translates, well, doesn't translate oftentimes into developers losing what ultimately they're after, which is an opportunity to build a certain number of homes. These two projects that we're looking at tonight, I think they're a good example as well, though, of what happens when you get some lots in a neighborhood that are 12,000 square feet or 13,000 square feet, which is almost always the case in a master planned development, where you have a particular part of a property that, for whatever reason, ends up being part of a bigger lot, then likewise, you end up with some lots typically that are smaller. That being said, the approval of preliminary plats for master planned developments, that comes to the council, whereas the approval of other projects in the preliminary platform, the planning commission approves those, and that's because ultimately, the council has discretion as to whether or not a project as a master planned development should be approved or not. The idea being that you see some value in that master planned development track versus a standard subdivision, and therefore, you know, you're willing to afford that flexibility to a developer that's permitted with a master planned development. This is something that the planning commission has suggested that they, they'd like to spend some time studying further, perhaps to make some changes to that master planned development program that we, we have. Like I said, I think, I think it was 12 or so years ago that we last made any kind of significant changes to it, so I think it's certainly time for a review. But I mean, the last thing I'll emphasize is that you do have discretion, in this case, to approve a master planned development. Should you deny a proposed master planned development, an applicant still has the ability to bring forth a standard subdivision, and as long as they meet all of the criteria that, that exist for a standard subdivision, and the zoning is in place, then that approval becomes simply matter of fact. It's administrative and it gets approved regardless of how anybody feels about it.
Okay. Did you say that between the two, it's the same density? Or would one have more than the other?
That is a great question. In concept, the densities are intended to be similar.
Okay.
In reality, there almost always is a density benefit for a developer, developer to pursue the master planned development option.
Okay.
Which is why I have a really hard time right now trying to recall the last standard subdivision that the city's approved. You know, there certainly is an incentive for developers to, to go down that path, and I say that genuinely. I think there definitely are things that the city's benefited from, you know, just by way of how neighborhoods have been designed, when we've had the opportunity to, to work with a developer and that flexibility that, that the ordinance allows for.
Thank you, Dave.
That was a mouthful. Sorry.
You think?
One quick question. Dave, what are the emails mentioned? The 1400 East and driveways and they're for the back of homes and the fences that get built, then the sidewalk, then the landscape, or lack thereof, and I always correlate that to, close to where I live, and I do see that. Close to where I live, the beautiful Sierra Park that I look at all the time, and then I see the homes that, on, on the street, across from it, the back up against it, and I wouldn't take care of it either because I'd have to go around the physical block with my mower, mow, water, trim, everything to get it. It's not happening. Is there any option there of, I know there's other places, we've done LID projects as the city, and been able to, to make some things look better rather than just create them? Or, or am I reading this wrong and there is no, there is no landscape there? There's just sidewalk and road?
No. There is a landscape strip. I can't recall if it's eight or 12 feet. Mr. Johnson over there will help us with that, I'm sure, in a second. So it's sizable. There's a sizable area that's dedicated to a couple of different things, but one of them is to try to make that street corridor much more beautiful and appealing than what some of the, the other similar corridors are in the community, you know, places that maybe were developed 15 or 20 years ago. So I think we certainly have learned, as most communities have, about some of the challenges that come with this kind of just lot and road arrangement. And I'll let Seth go from there.
Due to the location of this on that corridor, it'll have a, a park strip that I believe is 12 feet, a, a trail, and then another section of landscaping, and then a wall. And so it won't have a, a variety of fences. It will have a wall, correct? And so that trail, it, the Vincent Ridge subdivision that is recent, was recently constructed, where they have that park strip, trail, and some landscaping, and then a wall, that'll be a lot like this. The city actually, that's dedicated to the city, and the city will take care of that.
Same here.
Mm-hmm. That's something that Dale loves, so excited for, is great to, appreciates that additional landscaping responsibility. But we have found that the community, us, will beautify that parkway better, generally speaking and collectively speaking, and so that's, that's how it works. That Vincent Ridge subdivision's a pretty good example of how that works.
Right. Dave, another couple of questions for you.
I do love all of our questions, Mayor. You keep giving them.
I just love the questions. Just want to get to the public hearing. I want to hear to the other people, the important people.
Okay. We, we've talked in years past. I'm not a fan of, of master plans. The city has had issues with some master plans in the past, which is why I'm quite frankly, gun shy about this. I know in our discussions, if given the option, and, and this is where I need some clarification, if given the option, I don't know what developer would say, the higher density for a master plan or a standard subdivision, oh, I'll do the standard subdivision. And, and I don't mean that as a negative because clearly, it's their land, and if you can get more money doing one than the other, I, you'd be quite silly not doing that. But if I remember right, part of our code says that there has to be a justification on behalf of the developer as to why, and financially is not, that, that's not part of that justification. And looking at, at least what's laid out for this, reviewing the information, I'm not seeing a justification as to why it should be allowed. It, it does give us the flexibility, it, it, as you mentioned earlier, with some road, four, four access points instead of two. Quite frankly, on 1400, I think having that access, only five units in from the corner, is going to create a traffic log jam similar to what we see right there at Del Monte in the neighborhood that sits down below and has, you know, that little road that goes up just before the stoplight. I, I think we'll have a traffic, a traffic problem there, and so I, I'm looking at that. I'm not seeing justification as I reviewed the plans as to why they should be allowed, the master plan, over the, the standard. And then I know that they're supposed to be fairly similar, but I'm, even running the numbers, it's not, it's not similar. It, it's more in line with, with something like an R-16 or an R-18 as far as the total number. So I, I, I just need some clarification, some guidance, because clearly, that's what's, what's required is justification.
Which honestly, that's why it's on your agenda.
Okay.
So if you don't feel like that justification is there, you have the option to deny the proposed master planned development. You could at least have a discussion about changes to the design. And let me be clear, in terms of providing some type of detailed justification for supporting this type of request, we as staff, we have, we have really come to treat this as a matter of just routine, everyday course of business. Again, that's just a, a function of the volume of projects that have been reviewed, and, seemingly, we've gotten really comfortable with things being approved as master planned developments. But as a fundamental, just, I would say, essential part of the concept, you've touched on, on a very real part of it, which is that it's supposed to be quid pro quo. You know, there's supposed to be something in it for the city. There are some requirements that developers have to follow that had more clout a few years ago than they do now. I'm talking about things that are specific to master planned developments. It was more meaningful, for example, five years ago, that in master planned developments, developers were required to do a certain amount of the yard landscaping when homes were built. Well, a few years ago, we made that basically the, the requirement for everybody that builds in the city. So that kind of eroded, you know, part of that quid pro quo. We do require certain architectural things to be, be done on homes that are built in master planned developments. Things that involve, for example, a certain kind of variety that occurs in neighborhoods. Identical homes not being able to be constructed in a certain proximity to one another, to try to just encourage variety, a minimum roof pitch, a requirement that homes be clad in certain materials, with the idea that, you know, again, master planned development, the bar should be higher, and just everything should be elevated. In all candor, in today's market, the things that we looked at back in 2000, I was going to say eight, I'm not sure if that's right or not, but way back when, as being upgrades, well, today, that's what everybody does. So I mean, I think certainly, there's room to look at, you know, maybe a, a contemporary adjustment to the requirements and that sort of a thing. And now I do remember, we have had conversations about your concerns about master planned developments. I, you know, that all being said, it's up to you as the council to decide what you want to do tonight or, or otherwise. But genuinely, the planning commission's going to have a work session next week, and this is the, one of the, one of the things on their agenda, just looking at the master planned development program and changes they might want to recommend.
So to clarify what he said, because I did not know this, we are supposed to see the benefit of having a master plan approved.
There's going to be some benefit to the city in giving them the higher density, if that makes sense. Because it, and that's, that's the question I have, and we haven't heard from the applicant, which I, I would like to, but that, that's the challenge I have is, as Dave mentioned, that quid pro quo. If you're a developer, and I don't, I don't blame them or any developer for, for wanting the higher density. I have no problem with that, but the city's got to have, there's got to be, be a benefit to the surrounding neighborhood, to the city as a whole, for the reason for them getting that higher, that higher density. And the things that Dave said, houses now are, are selling with all of these amenities because it's a very highly competitive, you know, industry and field right now, and so that's...
All right. Let's, yeah. I understand your comments. I think we've got them. Let's go to, this is a public hearing. Let's, I'd entertain a motion to go to a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We're in a public hearing.
Great.
Yeah. So I've been trying to get you there. I'm sorry.
I am one of the houses that looks onto that Alf, beautiful alfalfa field, at least when they used to water it.
Tell us your name, sorry.
My name's Blaine Brady. I admit, stated earlier, we're 1056 South, 1450 East. I, my back views are of that field. Okay. I am one house up from the corner of 1050, so I'm looking on the back. Now, first off, 1400, I want to know if there's going to be a turn lane in there. Right now, the posted speed limit's 30, the actual speed limit's 40 to 50 miles an hour, and in the early morning hours, even faster, we're going to put more density on that road. You're now having us, you have a requirement to landscape the front of the houses, but I'm going to be looking at the back of the house and the stone, is it a stone wall? Okay. Hopefully, it'll match our new All Abilities Park, which I have seen every single day of its construction going to work. The, I seen, there's 83 lots between Heritage Farms and Gage Canyon. The Ivory subdivision I live in had 67, was required water retention and a small park for the neighborhood. Right now, since they come to, the entrance is on 1050, they'll be coming into our neighborhood and not upstate, and if you went by the All Abilities Park, which I did several times today, is at more than capacity, and there's not much social distancing going on, but that hopefully will be taken care of with a vaccine. I would think that they should be required to have water retention for their, and a small park for their neighborhood, which is about a lot size, and they certainly have the room for that. Lots 34 to 40 are all 8,000 square foot. That, I'll be looking at the backs of their lots instead of a front of a landscaped house. All the houses across the street from that have driveways, and it's inconsistent that they have to, you know, that, that they're looking at the back of somebody's house when they're on the other. I'm trying to keep, you know...
Hey, I'll give you a little extra time since you waited so long.
Well, thank you.
And I messed up at the very first.
Wondering if there's going to be a center, uh, turn lane, whether there's going to be a stop sign in between there to slow traffic down. Certainly, there are a lot of kids that will be using that to get to the elementary school and the other schools, and to the All Abilities Park. It sounds like the stone wall, and there's going to be enough room, or maybe they can meander it like it is up on Canyon Road. The, the question, I think, has been answered, that the city will maintain that as opposed to, if you go from 950 to Canyon Road, all the fences are falling down and nobody maintains that. It's all weeds and stuff. It looks bad. And then the, the subdivision going by Corey Branch's house does not have sidewalk going down to, and that should be finished, too.
Okay. That's it. Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your patience. Anyone else would like to talk about this subdivision?
Mihael Chonitzki again, resident of nearby there. My concern on, well, I guess I'm, I'm okay with it, you know, progress. I'm, you know, it's always been expected. We've lived there 17 years now, and we've kind of been hanging on to the day that it gets developed, so it's, you know, it's been expected. It's not a, not a big deal. There are some concerns I do have about the existing power line inside the property. That's the strawberry water line. There's a 46 KV transmission line going through there. And so there's like one lot there that pretty much, according to the plat, will, the guy wires will pretty much close off most of that lot, access to that lot. Nobody's going to want to buy that, right? And put together with the comments previously about adding the lots for, taking a lot for the water retention for the storm drain, a little bit of open space, kind of open it up just a little bit. And, and the question, you know, the concerns that the neighborhood has had about, well, if it's a master plan, then what is the benefit to the neighborhood? What's the benefit to the, to the city? My request is simple. There's enough concerns here that I have and other people have to kick this back to the planning commission. That is my concern, and that is my request. So I would hope that, that you would see things, are we for that? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Ar, Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any other questions? Do we have the applicant here? Let's have you come up and talk to us for a minute.
I'm excited to take the mask off, so. You guys do need snacks with the time.
No kidding. Yeah, you've...
All right. So I just wrote down some notes for some things that were talked about. Neighborhood concerns were talked about. We had a neighborhood meeting. We had two couples that showed up, spent time with us for about an hour. When they both left, they're very happy with the development, very happy with the project, how everything is being done. They both backed the, the lots in the project, so I... All right, so I just wrote down some notes for some things that were talked about. Neighborhood concerns were talked about, we had a neighborhood meeting, we had two couples that showed up, spent time with us for about an hour. When they both left, they're very happy with the development, very happy with the project, how everything is being done, they both backed the, the lots and the project, so I didn't receive any community concern, no one emailed, I had my email, my phone number, they could text, everything for that, so I didn't get that. On 1400, a lot of consideration that is going in for the, for the master plan community is we're giving up a total of 21 feet of our real estate along all of 1400. The city's getting 16 feet of landscaping, trees nice through there, and we are doing a six-foot tilt-up privacy wall, not having the parking, a five-foot trail system that will go from, started our project, head up to the All Abilities Park, so I feel like there's a lot that the city's getting to be able to get the community safely up there. I think it's gonna beautify the area. Our development, not speaking of the development coming after us, but our average lot size is 9,900 square feet, so we're well above 9,000. We just have some really big lots and some 8,000 square foot lots, so, so our density's not there. What's allowed, I think, is 3.5 or 3.57 lots per acre. In the master plan, we're at 3.2, so we're well under what's allowed, and there, we're not pushing the density of that. We have, they talked about stop signs and intersections and stuff, we do have traffic narrowing intersections within our project to, to accommodate that. There was two mentions of open space for retention basin, those are typically what get left for grass to die and not look attractive. City code allows for storm tech and storm brick and the mow strips and everything for the water to disseminate in. Our project has both of those systems along 1400 and internally to take care of the water, gets it off the street, gets it underground. You don't have, you know, a park that does get left to, to go to waste there. The power line issue with the guy wires, it actually, the pole is non-movable from what we've been told, and it actually comes in on the mow strip, and the guy wires probably extend out about 20 to 25 feet each way, the lots are 90 to 100 feet, so there's ample access to, to get into the property, it's not limited by, by any means at all. It's actually probably limited more by the line of sight for safety, you know, and stuff that way. See if there was anything else that I missed here. And then, we've on this, we've went through, like Dave mentioned, several reworks of this as far as how many units, what they look like, what we want to have in there, you know, starting out with three roads, we ended up with five roads, we took one that was gonna be a connecting trail from this project to the one north, ended up just adding a road in to get more connectivity between the two developments. So, we feel like we have given a lot to make sure that we do fulfill the PUD ordinance, make sure that we're, we're giving back, you know, not just taking on this one here. You know, the Ludlos are here, the owners of the property, they've been good stewards of it, they've trusted us to put forth something that is representation of what they want, we've worked with them closely several times on the plating of the property, brought it back to Dave in the back and forth, and we feel like we're there. And so, if you have any questions, I'm here for you.
Yeah, any questions?
The, the power line, did you just address that and I missed it?
Sure, yep, so if you have a, do you have a plan?
Did you talk about it and I missed it?
You missed.
Oh, I...
Stay with me.
So you can see, there's two lots on the bottom of the screen here that have a little wider side setback.
Uh huh.
So the power line goes through there and goes to lot 44, which is directly above that, and then heads north, yep, so it goes right, right in the mow strip, and then it heads north from there, all the way up the project, through the next project up to the All Abilities area, but I think they've thrown a number at like a million dollars a mile to replace that, and they don't want it moved. So it's kind of, we've, we've done our best to navigate roads and work around it, for sure.
Any other questions? All right, hey, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, if there's none other, no other questions, I would entertain a motion.
What? No. We were now in a public hearing, right?
Yes, we did, didn't we? Yeah, we did, we did.
Okay. Yeah, we did, sir.
Trust me.
Especially where you're dressed up, we don't see that very often.
Here's concern on the access in with five lots deep. In Quell Hall, it's just one lot deep, and so it's a more a matter of distance, which I'm sure you're 350, which is our minimum requirement. As far as the land for retention, all the retentions done in the storm tech and the LID requirement we have, so it's all underground within the planner. So we've got a 12-foot planner strip along 1400 East, which has the storm tech in it, and then the LID within the subdivisions, the storm bricks. And so they are giving up that 12 feet plus the 10-foot trail plus the four feet, and it's not reimbursable through the impact fees. So that's, that, that's the area, they are giving up, the city will maintain it, but they will deed it to the city and then landscape it and, and develop it.
So you'll have a trail where you have nothing?
A trail where you have nothing, trees, it meets the city's, you know, landscape requirements. It won't be a grass well, but it will be a grass planner strip with trees in it, and then behind the trail, there's a four-foot planner strip. I can't remember what it is, but it's, it's landscaped with rock, shrubs, things like that.
Blaine mentioned sidewalk that's not completed, typically, if it's not inside the project, it doesn't get completed, but can, can you address that?
It's only one lot.
Is it gonna be meandering, or is it gonna be a straight line?
It'll be a trail, so not a sidewalk.
So no sidewalk, just the asphalt trail.
And the plan, it just shows a straight line there?
It'll be connected with this project, we'll work that out with them.
Now, the, they don't, they aren't making a park there, whereas it'll push it into our neighborhood where we have the little park with the water retention. Everybody brings their dogs already, and they're coming from the neighborhoods that were behind us and around us, so you're talking, we, we have 67 homes there, and you're putting 83 or something like that into, between the two subdivisions, it's...
Could you go to the microphone, please, so that...
Oh, yeah.
People at home in the discussion.
Blaine, we better have you get the microphone so they can hear the questions.
If you would, we just, we've got citizens at home that are also interested that...
There's a park, and it's named after somebody, I have no idea who it is. The, you're putting in 83 homes, our All Abilities Park is heavily used by everybody else. Now you're talking about 83 more homes, we have a little one at 1050, if you go one house up, there's a park that's one house away from me, which is heavily used from all the people behind us and the neighborhoods, because they walk by my house to get there. And that, that's fine, but when you're adding 83 more homes with no place to wa, you know, walk your dog and stuff, it seems like a small park, similar where they have play structures for little kids, would be appropriate.
Thanks, Blaine, for that.
Thanks, Jared. Thank you. Anything else?
I just need to clarify, are the driveways backing onto 1400, or there's going to be a stone wall on 1400?
Stone wall.
Yeah, there's no driveway.
Okay. I thought Dave in the beginning, though, said that we were gonna redo this map.
Mr. Fallon suggested that.
Right.
He suggested.
Why?
We didn't.
Why we didn't, okay.
At least the staff, we think this is a better approach.
Okay.
Well, on 1700, you have that, and it does not work.
I'm in North End.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. If not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance Z09-20, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork for the Heritage Farms zone change. Is there a preliminary plat? And approving the preliminary plat.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal. Second by Councilman Gordon. This will be a roll call vote, Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Thank you, that is approved. All right. Ordinance Z10-20, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Gage Canyon Zone Change.
Again, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna try to make up for the time I took a minute ago.
Thank you.
This is really similar to what we just talked about, the issues are, they're inseparable, and the situation's the same. Staff recommends that the proposed zone change to R19 be approved, the planning commission likewise has recommended that that be approved. This is proposed as a master plan development, and it's been reworked, honestly, in concert with the other project, which, let me just be clear, we're talking about different developments, different applicants, these really are distinct. It's just kind of serendipitous that they ended up on your agenda at the same time, and the planning commission likewise has recommended that this proposed project be approved.
Hey, what's on Canyon Road?
What, the backside of those?
That's the All Abilities Park right across there.
So the frontage on Canyon Road will be improved almost identically to what we talked about on 1400 East.
On the development.
Yep.
It's a wall and...
Yep, limited access, masonry wall, landscaping, trail, do you know?
It's already existent.
It's just a sidewalk, yeah, so the trail is on the north side of Canyon Road, so that's the only difference that anybody would see between 1400 East and Canyon Road is a sidewalk rather than a trail.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'd...
Motion to go into public hearing.
Thank you.
Second?
A motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, anyone that would like to come and address the council, the mayor, on this one? You're welcome to come on up. Twofer.
Same issue, now you're looking at a straightaway with no other houses, and people are driving, we have a 30 mile an hour speed limit, and they're driving 40, 50 miles an hour in there. Something needs to be done to slow the traffic down, because we're gonna have kids get hit at some point.
Thank you. Anyone else? Make sure you state your name, Doc.
My name is David Ludlow, and I think even though these are presented as being similar, they're really quite different plans. If you look at the density, so on the, on the Heritage Farms one, 6% of the homes were on, or the lots are 7,000 square feet, 46 are in the 8,000s, and 48 are 9,000 square feet, so the majority are 9,000 square feet. On this one, it turns out that 39% are 7,000 square feet, 38% are 8,000 square feet, 25% are 9,000 square feet, and of the 9,000 square feet, six out of nine are on corners where they have no choice. So this really does more conform with an R18 than an R19 zone, which is the plan that the city's had for a number of years. So those who purchased homes around here thinking that their neighbor was gonna be an R19 are really now presented with a totally different plan, because, again, because it is a master plan development. So, the two subdivisions, even though they look on the surface quite similar, they're, they're really not, and we, Brad Morgan and us, we had a lot of back and forth, and that's why there were different plans that came to the city, until we finally settled on one, that in the one to the south has 3% of their R17, instead of whatever I said, 39%. So they're very different fields to these two subdivisions, even though on first blush they look quite the same. And so, you know, the exact wording of this, of your city code is that the, make a finding identifying why the applicant's proposal is justified, and it will provide a more pleasant and attractive living environment than a conventional residential development, and I can't see how this in any way makes a more pleasant and attractive living environment than an R1, a regular R19. And I, I think most of you read Bruce Fallon, who happens to be a neighbor, letter that removing probably three, maybe four lots would change this so that it would be very similar. One reason that Brad and our family came together on that to the south is, I do think there's advantage to having variety in a neighborhood. So having some 7,000 square foot, some 9,000 square foot, so that different sized houses are mixed together, I think is, in my mind, really ideal. I know that we can't do that at all times, but that's one reason that you have a master plan development. In ours to the south, I think that ideal is more closely met. This to the north, where the vast majority are 7,000 and small 8,000, it's not met. This is a subdivision that really is an R18, and that's a change. I know it meets the definition of an R19, but the spirit behind it is not. And so I would ask you to look at and say, how does this make the neighborhood more pleasant, more attractive? And I would love to hear the developer explain how it does. That along 1400 East was not a choice, that was a city mandated change. They did not have a choice, neither place had a choice on that. Along Canyon Road, that's a city mandated, that's not a choice that they made. When they purchased the property, they knew that was part of it. So as you look to this one, again, I can't see how that meets the definition of a more attractive neighborhood and a better neighborhood to have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else? Come on up.
Chris Hanson, 1252 East 900 South, live right by there. Been living by those builds for 40 years, loved looking at them, know they were gonna go away, I, I'm surprised they're still there. When we first got married, I thought they'd be gone, so. The development's not a problem, we know that's gonna happen, and it, it should, Spanish Fork's got a girl, I love Spanish Fork, grew up here, went to high school here, and love the city, right? And I want it to stay that way, I don't want it to change, like, you look at some cities and you go, wow, why did they do that? I don't want this to be, why did they do that? We went to the planning commission meeting, my wife and I, she actually got up and spoke at that one, and she's an introvert, so she felt strongly enough to do it, so it was my turn on this one. But I do think that one thing that I recommend to the city council, and thank you for serving, it's in, this is a lot of time that you take to do this, and I know that, and you'd never end up the good guys, ever, I mean, it's like being a coach, right? So you never really win. But thank you for doing that. And usually when I come to these, it's like for citizenship and the community merit badges, and so, or this is a little different. But thank you for serving, and we went to that committee, I think one thing we found that we talked about a lot was, that you really ought to look at the master plan, community, and talk about it, and maybe make some changes with it. When the Heritage one came up at it, there were concerns that came up, but lot size never popped up. Everybody that talked, that wasn't an issue. When, when the Cage one came up, everybody talked about the lot sizes, and that was a big concern. And so, I think when you, when you look at that, it even came up in that meeting, that's something we really ought to look at, because whenever we have these meetings, people show up when the lot sizes are too small, and they don't show up if, if they're fine. And so, that's obviously a concern. So I would recommend to maybe kick this one back to the committee, revise with the committee, saying, hey, there's some concerns here, let's maybe look at our master plan development ideas and see if we're gonna change it. If we're gonna be meeting in a few weeks anyway and changing them, why don't we kick this back and wait for those changes to take place? One, one thing is you do have the new park, which is awesome, and thank you for putting that in. That and the trails, Spanish Fork's just getting better, right? I utilize those trails, have to buy new shoes all the time, it's awesome. But you got the new park across the street, it's right across the street. And so, in 10 years, things change a lot, and that neighborhood's gonna change. When you look at some of the smaller lot neighborhoods, there's one just directly to the east of it, law enforcement goes over there periodically, and other ones are like that, you'll drive around, you look, and in 10 years, things change a lot. It would be nice if in 10 years, as we look and we say, wow, that's a nice community there, look at that neighborhood, this is a great neighborhood, instead of a, oh, man, what are we gonna do with that neighborhood? Especially when it's across the street from a flagship park that's there in our city and that people will see. And it already got mentioned that in order to make that change, there needs to be, be able to show why you would want to do that master plan development that way, instead of a regular neighborhood, how does that benefit the city to go smaller lots? And one thing you do see, if you drive around and look, is you see boats parked on lawns, you see RVs parked on lawns on the small, the smaller lots, you don't seem to see that as often as you get to bigger lots. You see cars parked all down the roads, people, I mean, even, you brought up, that you start off with a couple cars, next thing you got four, right? And there's just not gonna be places to park in, when your lots are that small with that many people.
Thank you for your time.
So, my time's up. So my time's up. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, babe.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Love to come up.
Decided I'm going to be brave, but my name's Tracy Weston, and I live at 1159 East, 850 South, just west of this proposed neighborhood. And we moved to Utah in, well, six years ago from Alabama, and we were nervous to move back to Utah, to Utah County. But we ended up in Spanish Fork and decided to give it a try, and we loved the community feel here. And so we've stayed. And we were renting at the time, and we were very thoughtful in where we wanted to be. And we chose to go with an older home, with a bigger lot, because that's what we really like. And our whole area is that way, and we love it. And as you go further, further east, it changes, and that's okay. Everybody has their own needs, and just everybody has their own things that they want. And so it works for us. But this isn't what we had envisioned, like for our surroundings. And we just would love to have a cohesive feel still to our area. And so that's one thought. And then the other thing is, is the new park. I loved hearing you guys talk about how much it means to you, and I watched the miracle video about the park, and I was touched by it, and I'm so excited for special needs kids who get to utilize that and not feel like they're second-class citizens, like was said. And we went there this morning, I have an immune compromised daughter, and we went from 8:00 to 9:30 because that's when we could social distance. But by 9:30, we needed to leave because there were that many people there. And that park's going to be busy. And I know that a few houses don't make a huge difference, but the more I can do to make that intersection safe, why not try to make that possible? And I just hope that we can keep this area. Chris Hanson was talking about how some of these neighborhoods, the turnover's quick, and those neighborhoods aren't kept up as well. Well, that's what people are going to see from our park. And I just, I want our parks to be taken care of, and I'm going to do my part to try to remind those kids who are at the park to take care of our things, and I hope that we all can, and I hope those citizens in that neighborhood have the same feeling as me about that. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
Motion to go out of public hearing?
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, any questions or comments on this? Imagine that.
I did. I think I'm starting to get under his skin down there. So what would it take for the residents to be a little happier with this? To just take out one lot, three lots? Is there a magic number that you guys think your neighborhood would like that would make a world of difference? Well, I'm asking whoever wants to answer.
I think the same density as the one to the south would be appropriate.
So it's been interesting as we work with the people to the south.
Will you run up to the mic just so they can hear you? I'm sorry.
As we worked with Mr. Morgan.
It was amazing to me how just small changes made quite a difference. So this one started out as, I think, 56 or 57 lots, not including ours, and now it's moved down to 52 lots. So removing those five lots moved it from a, in the beginning, it would have been indistinguishable from the one to the north. The majority were 7,000 square feet, some 8,000, and a very small minority were 9,000. So out of 57 lots, removing five made all that difference. So out of 30 lots, I would guess removing three or possibly four would move it to a majority 8, 9,000 and a very small minority 7,000, which, like I say, you know, it's been now 25 years ago I was on the Planning Commission, but I feel having a mixture in some ways really benefits a neighborhood. So having a few smaller homes, a few larger homes, and a lot in the middle, I think really works out well. So I'm guessing three to four lots.
Okay, thank you. So if I wanted to make a motion, I don't know who I'd ask to just make it with that change, would we, would I deny this or make a motion to approve it with minus three houses?
You're changing the whole development.
I know.
Okay, I just want to clarify that you've now become the developer and you've changed.
I don't think we've heard from, I don't think we've heard from the applicant.
Yeah, and so we need to hear from the applicant.
I think it would be good if you should invite him up.
Come on.
I think it's a great question to ask him. This is an engineer who's been sitting here all night, he's being paid by the hour. I have no idea if that's true or not. It's getting punchy, right? It's almost 9:30, so anyways, I think that's a great question to ask him.
So, thanks. I'm Scott Peterson with Atlas Engineering. I try to avoid these. No offense, I feel a lot more confident submitting plans than being up in front of the public. But we're here helping the client out to get to his meetings, but I wanted to talk, I hope we have the drawings. We've, well, first let me address the trail connectivity that we've talked about with Heritage. That's all going to be the same. You're going to do trail connectivity up to your park. The fronty John Canyon Road will have the landscape wall, the bigger park, park strip in front. So those are all the same. I don't want to be redundant with that, but those aren't insignificant either. And I will, I do want to echo one thing on the 1400 East improvements with not putting the driveways facing that from an engineering point of view. You don't want that for a traffic reason, which is a concern of the neighborhood. And you also wouldn't want, you know, between ours and Heritage, 12 driveways crossing your trail. So that, I agree with the way this is being developed, even though it's much more expensive because you're creating double-fronted lots to facilitate that. So, do we have the pictures of the architecture?
They're in the staff report, so the council has those.
Okay, so if you've seen those, the applicant's aware of what we're talking about with Councilwoman Beck and Councilman Scobes, that they're trying to go out of their way to improve the architecture because these lots are smaller, and we are doing the averaging, which, like we've done for years, but we don't, we don't want to take that for granted. What they've done is they front-load, Hive Homes will be building all these, and they front-load every unit with a front porch to try to encourage the front, people to come out of their backyard and meet their neighbors. So all of them have a covered porch. There will be no vinyl or stucco in the neighborhood. It'll all be, it'll all be hardy or stone and stucco, sorry, stone and brick, all four sides, which was a concern of the backyards. And then the price range in these homes, they start at about $370 and go up into the low fours. So I'd, you know, we're bigger than the lots across the street, to the east. We're, on average, we're smaller than the ones to the west. I think we fit in, we're meeting the zoning. And the other thing is I, you know, the comment about 10 years from now, that being a questionable neighborhood, $370 to the low fours for these homes is going to increase the value if we want to go there at that point. But I think we're finishing off the neighborhood with a good product that fits the neighborhood, you know? So that's what we've done in trying to address those concerns with the master plan. And then I can answer any?
Well, I was going to ask, Scott, it's been a lot of years since we've done this, but we've asked if there was an ask to reduce units. It's happened before, and rather than kick you back to the Planning Commission to do that, is that something you would need the owner here to make that concession if we said, hey, can you, can you look at taking three units out? Or is that a decision you could make tonight if we approved it?
Well, we'll take what we can get, so. That's what it is. If there's, the open space or open fill, I know this doesn't meet what you're talking about too, but he'd even be willing to go to the full setbacks to keep more space in between the homes, so we're not building as close to property lines if that was a concern. The architecture he's designed specifically for this neighborhood, most of them will all fit if we want to go to pure 10-foot setbacks. I don't know if that's an option or if that meets what you're asking, but we'll take.
Well, I know Mr. Ludlow said that it would take three lots, but if you did something similar to Heritage, but what would it, do you know what that number is exactly if we were to go to the same R-19?
No.
You're not quite sure if that's three or four?
No, we didn't design these together, of course.
Gotcha.
We're separate, and we followed what we've done for years here in Spanish Fork with master plan.
Okay.
But like I said, that's what our approach was to come up with, meeting all of the connectivity stuff that the city required. Like Dave said, the extra road to the south was something that was an easy give because of the density, and then we went to the architecture, so.
Okay, thanks.
I don't have a number for you.
That's helpful, thanks, Scott.
I like the way it's designed myself personally, and I'll interject here and give you my feeling here. This was trying to be compared with the homes that were over on the other side. I was around when those homes were built, and Seth would say, you know, it was back during the manger time, but, yeah, yeah. And no offense, back then, they were not very well-built homes back then, and it's been a long time since then. When you get homes at this price range, you know, you're going to bring in some quality people and people that are going to take care of their homes. I know that they've vested in this. This is something they've gone and taken to the planning board, they've probably gone back and forth, redesigned it and done the things that they need to. Staffs reviewed it, and they've gone through and given their recommendations. You've probably made some changes there. So my feeling is, and no offense, and I don't want any offense taken, when we have a couple of people say, well, I don't like it, let's take some more houses out, that we change it for that when these guys have gone through all the review and all that stuff. I think they've done their homework, I think they've gone through and done their due diligence. I think they've adapted and changed according to the planning and zoning people and according to our staff. And so my feeling is I think you've got a good product with both these tied in together. I think they work well together. I know they're two separate entities, but I think they've done well to tie them both in together and work together and coordinate, and I think that'll be a good project. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance Z-10-20, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Gage Canyon Zone Change and Preliminary Platte.
I got a motion by Councilman Argal. Second by Councilman Scobes. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
No.
Councilman Beck.
No.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
That passes. So, okay. Ordinance Z-11-20, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zone map of Spanish Fork City for the Oakberry Self-Storage Overlay Zone Change.
In recent months, the council approved a proposed text amendment to allow for the self-storage overlay to be applied to this property. That was done in part with the anticipation of a new wastewater treatment plant being constructed on the adjoining property and the belief that storage units are a good neighbor for that kind of a facility. So the text amendment was approved that paved the way for what's before you tonight, which is the actual zone change to place the overlay on this property so that the applicant can use it for self-storage uses. This case would be like warehouse types of things for maybe boats and RVs. Like they also anticipate having maybe some outdoor storage, à la carport maybe, for boats and RVs and that type of a thing, as well as what I think of as kind of the traditional storage unit, you know, maybe a 6 by 12, you know, kind of a big closet for people. All operated as a business at this property, particularly in light of the previous discussions we've had, staff and the Planning Commission have recommended the overlay be approved.
Motion to go into public hearing.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone that'd like to come and address the council over this one? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So move.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any questions or comments on this? Okay, I thought Seth was going to do something there.
Quick question. So just to the north is land that we're looking with the solid waste. What impacts, is there any correlation or impacts negative or otherwise with having that next to storage? You know, people's stuff sitting inside those, and if we have, now granted, it'll be a new facility, but if we have issues with any of that equipment, you know, is there any liability that now my, you know, my items are, you know, I can't get the smell out and the city's response? Do you see what I mean?
Uh-huh. And I think, and I'm just going to speak for myself, but from my perspective, the idea that the neighbor would be a largely uninhabited type of a facility and business and operation versus what the applicant previously was planning on developing on the site.
Right.
Which is what they've started to develop on the part of the property that's adjacent to 200 East, which are, we call them office warehouse units. They typically range in size from about 1,200 square feet up to about 6,000 square feet, and you see everything from dance studios to plumbing supply businesses to mechanic shops and different things like that, light manufacturing. I mean, it's a wonderful land use from my perspective because it's so accommodating of so many things. But the property owner is really, really concerned about the likelihood of being able to lease those types of spaces when they're closer to a wastewater treatment plan than where he has been so far with what he's built. So I think to your point, that's really the genesis of how this came about. It was the request of the property owner. I think we like the idea that the concerns that you're talking about, we think are probably lessened with storage units than just about anything else you could do there. And incidentally, I really do believe that contemporary wastewater treatment plants are not obnoxious. And that's, I don't expect anybody to take our word for that, you know, I think we have to prove that, but we're banking on that as well, so.
Sitting on the water quality board, the quality of the new wastewater treatment facility compared to our existing and the proximity to what the existing one has with country foods, Longview Fiber, so on and so forth, I'd be surprised if you have, you know, any issues with what you're kind of talking about.
No, and that's what I anticipate, but it's just someone, somewhere will have that concern and just want to make sure that we have on record that we have looked at that thought of it.
He's going to know that we've already started that process, right?
Yeah.
The applicant.
Okay. No, appreciate it.
Any other questions, comments, editorials? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance Z-11-20, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Oakberry Self-Storage Overlay Zone Change.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. This will be a roll call vote. Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilman Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Ordinance 14-20, making amendments to allow the temporary use of structures in the shopping center zone.
Mr. Mayor, the owners of the ShopCo building, that's what I'll call it, approached the city probably now about three months ago and brought up the idea of them potentially being able to use that building in a temporary fashion for some warehouse and storage type.
in a temporary fashion for some warehouse and storage types of uses. They were able to help us understand more precisely what they wanna do, and I think they've addressed some concerns that we had about the prospect of a building being used in the fashion that they've suggested they'd like to use it in. They're motivated simply to try to get a tenant, maybe a couple of tenants in the building. Obviously, it's an income stream, whereas otherwise, they don't have that. One of the things that I think we as staff view as a benefit from this type of use, it's simply, literally, it is the use, it's having people in a building on a daily basis, it's having the lights on, it's having it operated consistently. It's a matter of being more secure because of activity and that type of a thing. Different things that we think particularly short-term are good. One thing that I really appreciate as well is the idea that it keeps those buildings standing. The ShopCo building, incidentally, that's a much newer building than the Kmart building, so I think in all likelihood, or at least how it's being represented to me by people that have looked at it, it's probably a lot easier for somebody to adapt that to a new retail type of use maybe than Kmart, or at least it's cheaper to do that at this point. So I believe that this proposal would help keep the owners in the game of looking for an end-retail user, I think from a monetary perspective. They'd be highly motivated to do that, just understanding what I know about the potential value of it being used, if they were to find somebody to lease it for a retail use versus what they're gonna get, you know, for some type of warehouse or storage use. This is not uncommon. Some of the spaces, as I understand it, at, for example, the Provo Town Center Mall, are being used in a similar fashion. And, again, I think anything that is done to keep the property maintained, to keep the lights on, to keep it looking good, and to keep it in our inventory of potential retail sites, anything that doesn't detract somebody from potentially landing there for the, you know, the real prize, which would be to have a retail tenant in the building, I think is healthy. I think the owners really are trying to be good stewards of the property. And I know from the folks that I talk to that have investigated the prospect of doing something with it, again commercially, I don't think the owners are necessarily missing an opportunity to market the building. Now, the way that the language that's before you tonight is written, I think the Kmart building's another potential candidate for this type of a use. Other than that, there really aren't other buildings that we have in town right now that would qualify. And should somebody come along with some space that they'd like to use in this way, that maybe isn't a different zone or something like that, we might be back in the future to talk about an amendment, but that's the proposal, the planning commission recommended that it be approved. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
All right, we'll go into a public hearing and then see. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck. Second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone that'd like to address the mayor and the council on this? Come on up.
Okay.
All right, you might wanna sit closer. Getting your exercise.
I suppose this is a quick, Mihael Chanesky again, just a quick question, I suppose, is there a expected use of the warehouse facility? Is this a one-way trip for equipment, for warehousing things, or is this gonna be an Amazon distribution center storing things, moving in and out, because there's, you know, traffic, a lot of left turns there happening? Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dave, can you answer his question for him?
Just relative to what I think of with Amazon and their distribution centers, no. Because that would be a permanent use, and as this is written, that would not be allowed. So, for example, this particular property owner, they've talked to people that maybe it would be akin to a Costco, that would want to lease, let's say, 20,000 square feet of this building space to store merchandise during a holiday season, just to keep it in closer proximity to their retail outlet. Or it might be a company that sells insulation to home builders that would want to store material in there, you know, during their peak part of a season or something like that. Occupying a limited amount of space, paying a lease rate that does not justify changes to the building, you know, anything significant that way. But just enough, you know, again, to kinda keep the heating going and the lights on. And people coming in and out every day, which I don't know that we have the situation with the ShopCo building, but, you know, if you drive behind the Kmart building, for example, from time to time, I think you can see what kinda starts to happen when people don't go in and out of a building on a regular basis, and I think this is a good way to offer some remedy to some of those kinds of situations, so I think that's kind of the the expectation of what we're talking about here.
Thank you. Hopefully that answered your question. Any other questions, comments?
Now or out of public hearing?
Did we go out of public hearing?
We did.
We did.
Okay, all right.
But we can go back in if you'd like.
No, 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 no.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, just a real quick question on that. With Title 15, what, if we come into issues with the temporary use, one of the things I'm thinking of, if it's gonna be used to store merchandise, for years we've had issues where the police are called to business alarms. If it's storing merchandise and someone knows that, there is gonna be repeated alarms going off, which will necessitate repeated calls. You know, we have built into our system, you know, fees for each additional alarm call, but if it becomes a little too burdensome, is there a mechanism in either Title 15 or in this temporary use to be able to say, you have 30 days to vacate because it's, you know, it's an inordinate number of alarm calls, just to use this example?
The alarm call example would lead us just to follow the regulations that we have for that issue. I think it's fines and that type of a thing. We haven't built anything into this language that would necessarily say that we could revoke somebody's business license because of that. But, just by way of the expectation, for example, we would not be issuing a business license for a full year for any business going in there, so they would have, you know, that amount of time to operate there. And if we'd had issues with the business, we could either impose conditions to try to remedy that, or simply withhold the license and that type of a thing. So, I think we would have an easier opportunity to work on maybe even the revocation of a business license because of some things that we anticipate doing in terms of conditions that are imposed when the license is issued than we typically do. So I would think that that kind of thing will be less of an issue here than maybe otherwise.
Okay, no, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move we approve ordinance 14-20, making amendments to allow the temporary use of structures in the shopping center zone.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes.
Second.
Second by Councilman Argal. Roll call vote, Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
That passes. Ordinance 15-20, amending the Spanish Fork Municipal Code relating to types of animals that may be kept and penalties for violating animal regulations.
Mayor and council, this ordinance comes from our animal control officer. It's a simple ordinance, it just specifies the types of animals that may be kept are only the ones listed there. Obviously, there's other sections of our code related to dogs and cats and chickens and those sorts of things, but as far as these animals in this section, it's only those that are listed. But it also clarifies the penalty provision. There was a duplicate word, there was, said misdemeanors and infractions were possible penalties, but it's only an infraction for a violation of the land use ordinance. Any questions?
No changes to the amounts of.
No, no changes to the amounts, it's just the types. It was vague of whether it was just those listed or all different animals, and those were just examples, and so we just clarified it, it's just the ones listed there.
This was probably a fun one for you. Did pot-bellied pigs come up?
No, there's another chapter on that, so I didn't touch that one.
Yeah, that was a fun one, chickens and pot-bellied pigs, right? Did you guys wanna relive that?
No.
Okay, cool.
All right, this is a public hearing, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Beck. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone that would like to come and address us on this issue? You knew you'd finally get to your turn, huh?
No, I'm here because you guys are here. I figured if you can stay this late, I can too. So, but now that you've got something that's interesting, since I have animals, what kind of animals are you talking about? I didn't, I don't have a list. Has it changed much?
It's the same list that was already there.
Oh, that's already on the city?
Cattle, horses, sheep, goats, llamas, ostriches, rabbits, pigeons, ducks, bees, sheep.
These are authorized?
Those are all authorized.
So what is it that is requiring this to come up, that, what is it that somebody's trying to do?
There was an animal that wasn't listed there?
Alligators?
No, well, I can't remember what it was now, a peacock.
Oh, noisy. Okay, just wanted to ask.
Thank you. And you ought to give him a cookie for being here this long. Oh, he should've had one, they were good.
Motion to go out of public hearing.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon.
Second.
Second by Councilman Argal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 15-20, amending the Spanish Fork Municipal Code related to types of animals that may be kept and penalties for violating animal regulations.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon.
Second.
Second by Councilman Argal. This will be a roll call vote. Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
I read this, I didn't hear the discussion, but I read this, I'm in favor.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
That passes. Holy cow. Public hearing to allow public input regarding the insurance issuance of and sell by Spanish Fork City of not more than 14 million. Aggregate principal amount of water revenue bonds, Series 2020. And whatever else is on there.
So, we're back again. This time we're issuing water revenue bonds. The first month ago, we adopted and passed the parameters resolution, which set parameters on what the city's intent was gonna be, not to exceed certain amounts. Tonight is, by law, we have to have a public hearing to let the public have input on, ask questions about the issuance of bonds. The city is gonna go into debt. So, tonight, we'll give the public an opportunity to do that. Then afterwards, there'll be a resolution to adopt authorizing the staff to finalize and to actually go to market to sell those bonds, if that's what the city council wants to do. Seth, Chris isn't with us, he shared with Seth the list of what the projects are gonna be done, is what the bond money will be used for. It will not raise the water rates. Our rate structure right now, we have some bonds that are being retired, and those bonds will be replaced with these bonds as we go on the payment, so there won't be a rate increase in water, so.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone in the public that'd like to address us on this issue? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing. Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Gordon, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, there's no action on that. So now, we'll move to new business. Consideration for adoption of Resolution 20-22 of the City Council of Spanish Fork, Utah, finalizing the terms and conditions of the insurance and sale by the issues or of the water revenue bonds, Series 2020, in the aggregate principal amount of $14 million and related matters.
You just need to approve that?
No, it was a public hearing.
So we did the public hearing, now we're just, you're just asking us to approve that?
Right.
So.
Did you? We have the list if you wanna know what those bonds were, if the public wanted to know what we're gonna spend it on.
Yeah.
So we get that in the public.
Is that why you were there?
Well, I came over.
Well, gee, don't sit down, just tell me what you want. I'll take care of you.
I would like a chocolate milkshake.
Stacy can get that for you.
If Kelly were here, he would have.
Kelly would do it.
So this sewer, or sorry, this water bond project is coming about because of the circumstances that we're in. You recall that we recently have a sewer bond that we took out for the sewer project, and our interest rate was one point, and do I need to go on any further, in one point, six percent, that was fantastic. And as we analyzed the needs in the water system, and look at the list of projects that we have that are significant capital projects over the next five to six years, we have the ability to put those in a package where we can bond for a similar rate. And in fact, our financial advisor says that if current conditions continue, then it's likely we could see similar rates. We'd certainly expect something below two percent, and I think that's phenomenal for me to sit here and say, we'd certainly expect something less than two percent. So the list includes several significant items, such as re-lining the Crab Creek line that comes down Highway 6. That line has had, well, it's very, very old, and it's had significant challenges, and those challenges include a lot of holes. And with the infiltration possibilities with that, many, many years ago, we took that off of our drinking water system and put that into our pressurized irrigation system. The water, as it comes into the system, is great, very drinkable. But in the pipe system, there's questions of the integrity, and so we use that in our PI system. But with this lining, we'll be able to divert that 24-inch water line into our drinking water system, enhancing and improving that. We have about two to three miles left of that project. Install a line in the east bench area and connect to the Mapleton CUP tank that they have, that will significantly improve the water pressure in the pressurized irrigation system for the whole east bench, specifically areas around, say, Maple Mountain High School and the Legacy Farms area. Right now, the pressurized irrigation there is weak due to the elevation and the system, this will solve that for the east bench. Replace two old water tanks up in the canyon, we have a 1 million gallon tank and a 2 million gallon tank. We will decommission those in phases and build a 3 million gallon tank that will serve our water system for several decades. And then finally, install several PRVs around the city that will allow us to maintain better pressure throughout the city. And as funds permit, we have a handful of water line replacement projects in the core part of town. And we'll use those as buffers, depending on how the funds go forward with projects. Most important about this is there's no rate change with it. As we see the projects in the horizon, the revenue from the existing rate structure can take care of the bond payments. So it really is a great opportunity for us to take advantage of up to six to 10 years' worth of capital projects, immediately receiving immediate benefit and paying for it with the existing rate structure that we have.
As far as the timetable, after, if this resolution is adopted, then next week, we'll plan a rating presentation to get our bond rating for our water system. And then after that, it'll probably be another couple of weeks, and then we'll do the bond sell, the actual sell of the bonds. Within the next month, it should be, the process will be over.
Okay, we need a vote on this.
Sorry, I'm gonna recuse myself on this vote.
Sorry, I'm gonna recuse myself on this vote.
Okay, thank you. All right, I need a motion on Resolution Number 20-22.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 20-22 of the City Council of Spanish Fork, Utah, finalizing the terms and conditions of the issuance and sale by the issuer, my goodness me, they shouldn't have done this, of its water revenue bonds, Series 2020, in the aggregate principal amount of $14 million and related matters.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Beck, a second by Councilman Argal. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Ordinance 16-20, amending Title 8, abatement of weeds, garbage, and refuge, adding an appeals process.
I have a long presentation for...
I bet you do. I hope someone's here to listen to it.
This ordinance establishes an appeals process for people that have had their weeds or their trash abated from their property, similar to what we have for alarm appeals. Basically, they need to make a request for a hearing within 20 days of the city sending them the bill for that, and then they have a hearing with the Public Safety Director or a designee to conduct that hearing. And then if they're still dissatisfied after that hearing, they can appeal that to the city council. So that kind of mirrors our process for alarm appeals. Any question about that?
Any questions for Vaughn? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Ordinance 16-20, amending Title 8, abatement of weeds, garbage, and refuge, adding an appeal process.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal.
Second.
Second by Councilman Scobes. This will be a roll call vote. Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
That passes.
No.
No.
I move a adjourn.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon and a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
We are done. Thank you for the marathon. Thanks for hanging out.